Good morning, everyone. Kiaotata. Welcome to this annual plan council meeting. Welcome to councillors, the government of the staff, to whom we are indebted for the collation of all the submissions, to the public, media and most of all to the submitters, the important people in this. We have one apology from councillor Pete for today. I'll move from the chair that that apology be accepted. Second councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carry on. Confirmation of the agenda. I'll move from the chair that the agenda as published be confirmed. Second councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carry on. Number three is for noting. Number four actually isn't here, but I'm going to move from the chair, the suspension of the standing order requiring people to stand when asking questions. So, second councillor Staines. Does there any discussion on that? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carry on. Right, I'll just do a little introduction. As we're aware, after councils' deliberations in January, we issued the draft annual plan and sought feedback from the community on all of the issues and spending suggestions in that draft annual plan. And we specifically identified three for particular consideration by the community. And that appears, I'd have to say, to have been successful, as we've had a record, at least in recent years, of 1,119 submissions, of which 176 will be heard in person, I think that's about the number. I think that's great. The council put up the draft plan in good faith and we genuinely want to hear the community's views on it. Now, however, because of such a large number of submissions, the time allowed for these hearings may be quite tight. That is a considerable number to get through. And we need to give everyone who wants to be heard the full chance to do so. And we don't want to be rushing the last ones or extending into evenings when we will inevitably be already tired and possibly scratching. So I intend necessarily to be pretty strict with the limits on times for speakers. That's a discipline I ask of the submitters. Five minutes for individuals and 10 minutes for organisations. I also think we need to discipline ourselves. I would ask the councillors, that we councillors restrict ourselves to essential questions to elicit extra information or clarity and don't stray into discussion or argument. That's appropriate during deliberations next week. We've got plenty of time to do that. And can we avoid repetition? There are a lot of repeat submissions. So if questions have been asked and answered for some, we don't need to necessarily ask them of others. Or indeed, if another councillor has asked a question, we don't need to repeat it. So, on to the submissions. And poll position is Mr Friedlander. Welcome, George.
You wish it. Can we get someone to... There's a terrible feedback getting... Could we please get someone up in this to...
Sure.
Well, it's by the end of the night, we will be...
Does anyone have any idea what's causing it?
Please.
Thanks councillor Vandis. George.
Thank you.
Welcome Jeremy.
Thank you.
Flora George, you have 10 minutes.
Bearing in mind the timeframe we just mentioned, I think our application is pretty much specked for itself. On behalf of Alston, we obviously thank for the support over the years. Last year, we forego a lot of our application. Obviously, money was tight. And this year, I guess that our funding has been reinstated. We're asking for that money that we didn't get last year to get that on top of, to help with some marketing initiatives really. I think, you know, it's been pretty tough out there in the tourism portion of the market. And I'm taking a fair share of hits. And we are striking ideas to promote ourselves. So, if you look at the budget towards the year, we're really, the extra money we're looking for, which is not a significant amount, is really aimed at promoting the house... Sorry, promoting the house to the local market, but also the national market. And for example, we've never been able to send our manager to Trentons in Auckland. Whilst we have representatives who speak on behalf of Alston, we prefer to do it ourselves, directly to the wholesale. So that's a nuts and bolts thing, really. I don't think I have anything to add other than that. If you have any questions?
Well, I'll throw out any questions, councillors. Does anyone have any questions? It was a very clear written submission, I have to say. Thank you for that. Any questions? Councillor Thompson.
You say that your wholesale admission rates have been frozen at the request of the tourism operators. How long has that been the case?
With the wholesale, we have to set our prices two years out. So we have, I think, we have negotiated... We are negotiating a core increase for 2017 at the speed. That's as far out as we can go. And a good example of that was we got pulled out a few years ago with a GST increase. And they would not put our prices up in GST when they had an example of how frozen they are. We just had to where the GST went 15 cents. It's pretty tough with those guys. We have no power.
Councillor Hawkes.
Outside of admissions to the house, I'm aware that you were running a number of initiatives around admissions to the grounds, particularly trying to get local admissions up. And I wonder whether it's too... Is it too soon to tell whether those casual admissions to the grounds are translating into paid admissions to the house? And if it is too soon, then I'm assuming that data is... Is that data being collected or...?
Probably Jeremy does that better than I can. But we don't charge for admission to the grounds. But obviously by getting people onto the grounds, we hope that they'll then go onto the house. And I think we do keep pretty good records of where people come from. And I think it's fair to say that the local people visiting is probably tripled. So we've satisfied those initiatives.
Councillor Newt.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just looking on page 18 of our papers, but it's under your financial statement, your ending 30 June. And I just wondered, could you comment on accounting fees? And it's got the main city council in brackets. 2,012, 15K, 15 and a half, 2,013. Could you just elaborate on that?
Yes, so because Alston is owned and trust by the city, all our accounting function goes through the DCC. You know, our funding is done, is held by Treasury. We don't run our own bank account. All the wages and everything goes through the city. And we pay for that.
So that's effectively an internal charge.
Yes.
To the organisation. Thank you.
Councillor Wylie.
Thank you. Two questions, one quick. How do your entry fees compare to other similar properties around the country?
Well, it's a good question. We don't really have any real data on that. We are, we've tried to keep it as reasonable. But part of our deed is to make it as accessible as possible. So we're mindful of that and what the market will bear. I think we're comparable, if not cheaper. The one issue I guess that we always have, and you all have heard it in here many times, is we're convening with organisations in the city which are free when we accept that test.
That was my follow-up question. I notice you're 1850 for adults and 1450 for residents. Which I think is great. Do you think like Toyota being free and things like that, the city providing a lot of free visitor services, really competes with you and takes visitor time away?
It's a bit of a double-edged sword. I think it makes the lead and attracts the places to come. You know, people have a good time here. We can go to the city and see the gathering and, you know, the Toyota and those things for free. And they'll do other things while they're here, so it's an attraction. But yes, if people have budgetary constraints, there's only so much they can do. But more on top of that, when Alston started back in the 60s, there weren't many attractions in Dunedin. Now you have space, you've got cat breathers, all sorts of things which are paid. There's still more people coming. So I don't think it, personally, I don't think it's a major issue.
Any further questions? Thank you, George. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
The next submitter is Bernadette Newlins. Welcome, Ms Newlins.
Thank you.
Flora George.
Thank you. Um, mea culpa and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to talk today around the issue of the Portobello sequence of the road widening in the cycleway. I'm speaking to you really as an educator who's worked on the peninsula now for nearly 30 years. In fact, in the last 30 years, I think there's only two and a half years when I haven't been either teaching at Portobello School, principal at Broadbay School or principal at McCandrie Bay School. And I'm currently the principal at McCandrie Bay School. And I'm also a resident of Broadbay. So a real peninsula person. What I would like to talk to you about is really the experience I've had in terms of the difference that the cycleway, the walkway, has made at McCandrie Bay School over the recent years. And also thinking back to my times at Broadbay and at Portobello and the issues that really face families getting their children safely to school without the benefit of safe footpath and the walkway that we currently have being such an asset at McCandrie Bay. As you can imagine, the time that people are getting their children to school is the busiest time on the road. It's when all the people are going into work. So the road's really, really busy. So it's very important that the children can get to school safely. Currently, people think it's too unsafe usually to walk their children. So walking is less of an option in Broadbay and Portobello. So they tend to drop their children at the school gate, which most of you will be aware, causes a huge amount of chaos. You've got cars everywhere, people double parking. It's not particularly safe. In my time as principal at Broadbay, we had a number of accidents that luckily were people backing into other people's cars, not into other people's children. So they are the sort of issues that you want to avoid by having more people walking. Also, we have... And I know Broadbay also tried to get a walking school bus. Now, that was something when I first came to McCandrie Bay, when we didn't have the walkway. We tried to do for the people from Company Bay to come along to school. And it was really deemed to be very unsafe by the police, education officer, when they locked into it in the DCC. So that had to be left. Although we did have enough footpaths to get the children along from Collins Wood, we couldn't do it from Company Bay. But now, we have sometimes up to 30 children walking in a walking school bus along from Company Bay to school, which is just fabulous. Another thing that I think is really important in terms of the benefits I see for the McCandrie Bay community are really in terms of health and wellbeing and community connectivity. I see the community out and about. They're bumping into each other, they're having chats. The kids are biking or scootering. The parents are walking or biking alongside them. And it's just a great way for the community to connect. Older people in the community are out for a walk after nine o'clock when things are a bit quieter. There are huge benefits to all sectors of the community. So my plea would be to stick with the current plan. Don't change your sequence. Stick with what you had decided earlier, I think back in 2005. I think that people further along the peninsula have got less footpaths even than McCandrie Bay. So it's really important that we deliver what we thought was going to happen, if possible. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. Just the first question is, do you think that people, being a Broadbay person yourself, would you be prepared to pay more to... There's a few submissions that suggest just doing all of the work quicker, but it's a matter of how that would then be packaged. Do you think the people who benefit most from this, being people like yourselves, would be prepared to pay more as a targeted rate to get that to happen?
Well, I certainly would. But I mean, I'm a principal and on a reasonably good salary. So I can't speak for my whole community. But to me, it would be, you know, a huge priority and I certainly would personally be prepared to pay.
And the second question, I may ask several people this, but if you look at, as we did, Mike and I went down the... Had a look at the project last week. And if you think about Boxall being a very narrow part and in one of the submissions, the suggestion that seven hectares of soil has to be moved in to do that whole project, which is a lot of truck movements. What will happen to that area as a truck? If your project is done first, if your sections, as you suggested, done first, what it will do to that with a large number more trucks going down to... And I just want to understand that, are you very familiar with the Boxall section and what it's and how many people use it now? And how many school people want to use that section as well? In the vehicle trucks?
I certainly drive past, you know, as they commute into town or come into town for various things, we see people using the Boxall section. I guess in terms of the trucks and the impact on the road, you know, we understand that. We've been through that with the McCandrie Bay section. We've seen all the amount of fill that comes and we've seen the trucks and we've experienced the, you know, the just, the problems of waiting and all of those sorts of things. But I think in the end, you have to go through that. Don't you get to somewhere good?
Yeah, but you're... If we did the Boxall section first, it would be safer for the other trucks to keep on going further out?
Councillor Wilson, is that a question?
Yeah, it is. I'm just wondering if she understood that part of my question.
Okay, so you're thinking about the damage to the road, et cetera, are you?
No, I'm talking about the increased truck movement that will be, if we did the Portobello section first, the increased truck movement on an already narrow section is... Had you considered...?
I hadn't considered that.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Mason-Park.
Thank you. You talk about the vehicle congestion at those peak times at the beginning and the end of each day. That's a common problem with all schools, particularly primary schools, isn't it? Is there any difference for the peninsula schools in that respect?
Well, I think particularly at Broadbay School, you know, they've got little road buck rise, which is incredibly narrow. And Greg Street, which is also very narrow. So I think that's a particular area which is quite difficult. Portobello School has got that car park, but it's got a very dangerous cutting there too. So there are a few issues for both of those schools that I would see.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
In Broadbay, the access to Broadbay School, there is... Sorry, I'm just looking at maps here. I'm not reading my emails or something. But there's some... For the majority of Broadbay, there is access to the school without having to go along Portobello Road.
But I guess what you may not be aware of, you know, there aren't footpaths. So if you're walking up Greg Street to come to Broadbay School, you're walking on the road. That street has got a little blind corner, bit of a bend. And we always found that incredibly dangerous. In fact, since I've left the school, I know they've put in road bumps because they needed to slow down the traffic because of the fact of those children walking to school on the road along with cars using the road. Yeah.
Councillor McTash.
Thank you. The question that I have is similar to councillor Thompson's. And that is, even if there was that footpath there, students would still need to walk up Greg Street to get to school, would they not?
They would. They would. Or unless they came from the other way, which is even worse because road buck rise is, you know, it's got a terrible bend at the top there. You can probably see on your map if you're looking at that. But that would be a shorter section. At least the majority of their trip to school would be safer.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for your submission. Now, Mr Simpson.
Welcome. Good morning, everyone. Yeah, I'm Ian Simpson. I run the Rottweiler Studio, a local group development company. This is a woman's company who runs Swift Social. Again, a local company, a local social media, that sort of thing. We've both had the opportunity to bring interns into our businesses because of the 60s and the old program. We've both employed an intern and we're both hoping to employ another in the near future. This has allowed both of us to grow our respective businesses. And it just wouldn't have been possible for us to do that without the support of this program. So firstly, I want to say thanks for the support the council has taken to the program in the past. We here today on behalf of the whole Dunedin business community, not just the IT sector, seeking an increase in funding for the program to allow more businesses to take on more interns and more sectors. I'd love to answer, do my best to answer. Any questions that you've got?
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor Carroll.
I'm reading here that the estimated dollar value that businesses gain from having an intern was, I think, $63,000 or something. If the businesses generally feel that it's not a huge benefit to them as an ability to do things, why would the businesses not be paying for that if they see the value in it?
I guess, I mean, I can't speak for every business. There is a large risk element. So it's an average of $63,000. Some will be lower, some will be higher. There's also obviously quite possibly a large lead level on that. For example, I was talking to... Somebody recently has taken somebody on in a research and development role. Obviously, when you're effectively starting a business, funds can be quite tight. And I think that for him, that research and development will have a big payoff in the future. That might be a year or two down the track. So a small investment now from both himself and the council will hopefully pay dividends and create jobs and businesses down the track.
Would that work at all to be a loan?
And I guess the difficulty is again, it's not a guaranteed payoff. We also know that research and development sometimes comes up that this isn't going to work. So it may work. Yeah, I would be cautious in making the companies that it doesn't work. You know, if it doesn't work out, I think you have to pay that money back, don't you? Yeah, that's a bit surprising.
From my perspective, we took on someone without revenue book. So we were hoping that they would be the ones who would generate that revenue and it has been that way. So it allowed us to take a risk without the resource to pay them over any long term and go, okay, let's hope we can grow this business to enough revenue to support this person long term. And so that has happened for us.
So if that happened for the businesses it happened for, do you think they'd have any appetite for saying, well, it's worked for us, so we're prepared to pay back for it?
Again, I can't speak for every business, but it could well be a possibility amongst some of them.
I think for us, it was about reducing the risk of that employment situation. But as you know, there's a lot of risk in employing someone.
Just after the risk?
Yeah, so, I mean, financially, the gain isn't huge. We're talking $1,500. You know, that's not a lot really when you're employing someone for any length of time. But it actually gets you in the door with them and then you can go, okay, yeah, this person is going to be a generator for this business. So I think the loan thing, whether that wouldn't be an issue really. I don't think that's not what, you know, why people really like it. It's not about the money. It's about the risk. It just sits in the centre, and that's what it is.
Councillor Hawkes.
Thank you. This program, in your submission, says grew out of as a response to a shortage, a skills shortage in the IT sector locally. I'm assuming, but correct me if I'm wrong, that the kinds of employees that are being taken on by businesses through this program are weighted towards the entry level and of the IT employee spectrum. I just wonder, has this, what has this made any real headway in addressing that broader skills shortage problem in that sector locally?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the majority of the people coming into the program are entry level because they're students or recently recruited students and given what it is across many sectors, not just IT. Although some between a third and a half are in IT. I guess it has helped us in that, hopefully, there should be more people staying in Dunedin in the IT sector. For example, one of the guys, or the guy I have employed, he is only going to fix that role unfortunately because he has hands for later this year. But certainly in that time between, he was planning on heading back to his folks' place in Canterbury. So I mean, that's eight months or so of employee time that has stayed in the city. And obviously, if we had a problem, we would have to find somebody else. So yes, it does help. Because every little, every new student that stays in the city will, after a couple of years, man, that's somebody experienced, especially still in the city.
And can I just ask, between the contribution of the program and the contribution of the employers combined, what, how does that stack up compared to the market salary for the people that are being employed by this internship program?
It's not dictated by anyone. We don't tell you, you have to pay them for a site for it. It is suggested that we pay them a fair salary, a fair wage during that time. So we certainly pay several dollars more than minimum wage.
But less than you would pay them if you just employed them?
About the same as we would pay an entry level person. So, you know, I would say it's quite a reasonable wage.
Councillor Wylie.
Do you think giving the students an opportunity to do business in Dunedin and be part of a business in Dunedin has a greater chance of bringing these students back at a later time to start a business in Dunedin?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's not the ideal situation, I guess, is that, yeah, they stay here or they come back here. You may have seen the article on the ODT and I think on Channel 3 the other day about Dunedin being the Silicon Valley or the South or whatever the term they coined was. So I mean, fostering that sort of environment, I guess, is always positive. And certainly, I mean, that Blomian, the pocket smash, which was created by the students timely and, thank you payroll, but there's also a bundle of other smaller startups who are doing pretty cool things. And if we can keep those people in Dunedin, that's always positive.
The company I'm in is a startup and I work with startups as well in another job. And I think there is a real culture of working within startups which is slightly different to a, or quite a lot different to a more mature company. And so our interns actually are being exposed to what it means to being something which has to be very flexible and pivot very fast if things are changing. So I think just that experience is good for those guys and is likely to drive that, the likelihood of being part of startups in the future.
Councillor McTash.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your submission. The question that I have, I don't know how long you've been involved in the program, so you may not be able to answer it. But that is, if I look at the number of interns or the jobs that have come out of the internships every year and look at the proportion of those, it seems to be a bit of a case of diminishing interns. And that 2019 was the highest, it's about 66% of those doing the internships resulting in jobs. We're down to about just over 30% this year. Do you think that that is something that we, a trend that we'll continue to see? And/or is it something that's related to the fact that businesses that have used this in the past, perhaps for their low hanging fruit, are now using it for riskier areas? And the third question out of that is, if that is the case, ought it be restricted to a one-off thing for businesses? So every year, it's a new batch of businesses?
I think one of the factors, certainly early on, was just IT. So I couldn't tell you which year it became opened up, but that could probably be a factor. Obviously, there was quite high demand in the IT sector. So I'm guessing that's part of it. It's also worth pointing out too that these aren't final figures. Obviously, there's still internships happening or benefits may create jobs out of this year. So we expect that number to rise to around about 20. I could be sitting at 17 jobs created now as of last week. And we expect it to be somewhere around 20. So pushing towards that 50% mark, which should be a better, is a better result already than last year. So in terms of the companies using it and the jobs that they're... So in terms of the companies using it and the jobs that they're, they're using it for, I think, a lot of the companies who used the program in the early years have stopped using it. And that could be to do with, obviously, you know, they can reinvest the money that they've got from the first ones into the, into the future ones. So, yeah, there's a couple of companies that were, like I say, prolific, but certainly used the program for the first few years that haven't for the last couple. So I guess, you know, it could be because it makes the companies that are doing it more startups, I guess, as well as gear and such that protect this.
No further questions? Thank you very much for your submission. Mr. Polanski? Mr. McGlocklin, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I appreciate that it wasn't really necessary, but we should make ourselves available to answer any questions councillors may have and to add emphasis to the value we place on support we receive from the Dunedin City Council. I would like to say to you all that we appreciate the support and assistance of both the governance and management sides of the council. And in the letter, we especially welcome the greedy willingness of Rhonda Emma Promby and City Property and Rebecca Williams and her team. The Hall has been operating in the railway station since 1999 and in that time has established itself as a national memory house for all that has been achieved in New Zealand sport. And this is increasingly acknowledged throughout New Zealand. People achieve great things on sporting stages throughout the world, whatever the sport may be, but it is in Dunedin that their deeds are remembered and perpetuated. When we first set up shop in the railway station, there were discussions with city officials at the time of developing the Anzac Square, Lower High Streak, Lower Stewart Street area as a heritage precinct. The Setters Museum, the Senatav, the Bullports, the old prison, the old police station were all in there. It seemed a natural evolutionary step for the present to redevelop its past. We're pleased to know that this is slowly coming to pass and that we're proud to be part of it. At that time, we even suggested that Lower Stewart Street could be renamed Ebert Williams' Way in honour of the Dunedin woman who became the first New Zealand woman to win an Olympic gold medal and also set a world record. But we were told that might run into opposition and we backed off, knowing that Ebert would not have wanted battle sport in her name, but the thought still remains. We don't just run what is in effect a sports museum. We continue to liaise with people who have been inducted, and our most recent were two of the most celebrated sports people in their time, Sarah Elmer and Joan Alomu. Our inductions continue to form part of the annual Helberg Awards dinner, and this gains national television's coverage. This year, the Hall of Fame segment was accompanied by specially shot footage of the Hall's interior and the exterior of the station. We continue to publish books that commercial publishers would not worry about, and this year we will be mounting a special display to mark the death sensation of two of our honoured members, Anthony Wilding and David Gallagher. We're pleased to be able to tell you that we have received specific funding for this from a special fund set up by the Loughrey Gardens Grants Board. A cursory examination of the Hall's accounts show that we operate under a tight financial regime and that any money we do receive is expended in fulfilling the Hall's objectives. The DCC's grant is made to assist with rent and insurance, and its provision frees up money to spend on furthering the Hall's aims and providing more exhibits. The Dunedin City Council's support is critical to the continued wellbeing of the Hall and a continuation of that support would be greatly appreciated. So thank you, and we'll take any questions.
Questions, councillors? councillor Bannister?
Are the sources of income that you have, they're fairly consistent? Have you got any potential to expand or do other things or perhaps even to some extent reinvent yourself as all businesses and museums and whatever must do from time to time?
That's a good question.
Just wondering, how do you see, looking into the future, how do you see your ability to perhaps expand or broaden the appeal of whatever you do?
Okay, well, that's, thank you for that question. Our other main funding comes from Spark, so that's $100,000 a year. And then we have one-off grants that we're able to get through the gaming trusts. We have our admissions, which are about $28,000 a year, that's revenue that comes through. And then apart from that, we get, we've got members who pay a subscription. So in terms of reinventing ourselves...
Do you get any community trust or other kind of grants from time to time, or do you apply for them?
Yes, we do. We find for capital-type items, we can attract funding readily. But for operationally, that's where the issue is. Yeah. So we've had very good support because when we first set up, we were able to do so with capital grants from the various trusts. But in terms of reinventing ourselves, this is on the agenda regularly, just looking at how we can relate to the public. And being in Dunedin, we also look at our outreach to the rest of the country, and we look at satellites where we can add value to other parts of the country so that they know that it's not just Dunedin, we're an international museum, but certainly anchored well and truly in Dunedin.
Is there any potential for you to roadshow or to exchange with other museums around there?
Yes, there is.
And has any of that sort of happened so far, or is that something you're looking at?
It's something that we're looking at. But once again, they're all in the same situation of funding, so it may not be a revenue source.
Thank you. If I could just elaborate, just to explain that the first part of your question was about reinventing ourselves. Up until this year, we've been restricted because we've been a New Zealand Sports Hall of Fame, therefore we can only have displays and exhibits on people who have been inducted following a review process. At our annual meeting this year, we got through a change that we are now called, or can be called, New Zealand Sports Hall of Fame and Museum, so, which allows us to have exhibits and other things on people who have not been inducted or on sports events like the Commonwealth Games of Croatia, for example, or the World League of Lightnings, you know, famous cricket events, karate competitions, anything like that.
That sort of thing. And we've already begun doing that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
councillor Wilson?
Just wondering, and taking that point further with museums, and in the past few years, we've ensured or encouraged museums in Dunedin, which there are a large number of them, to collaborate substantially more than they used to. Some of those have done by putting grants through the actual museums, like Strathair getting it straight from Toitum. I'm not suggesting that in this case, but what collaboration are you doing with other museums in Dunedin to ensure that your point of difference isn't overlapped by others, but also to make sure that you're working most effectively on collaboration on marketing, for example?
The collaboration, councillor Wilson, is just by person contact. I'm in regular contact with people at Toitum in particular, and was in regular contact with Shrimp Pork at the Itagor Museum. Haven't had contact yet with the new director. But it's at that level that they're aware of what we do. Just, and, you know, if I have a conservation problem, for example, I will bring the appropriate person in the museum.
But as far as marketing your museum, you do that completely separately. Is there potential to collaborate better on those sort of things?
It would need investigation. I don't know. It would certainly help in terms of money. I just don't, I can't answer that question. It's certainly worth exploring, though.
councillor Borkes?
Thank you. Does the New Zealand Sports Hall of Fame have a view on the potential for the railway station to become a node for intercity bus passengers and/or cruise ship shuttle passengers during the cruise ship season?
Well, I think it would be positive if we had more people coming down there other than the toilets, I suppose. As long as there are more toilets provided, that's always a matter, isn't it, of people coming up? But look, any traffic that's coming through would be positive.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for your submission. Mr. Brown?
Markan Brown?
My name is councillor and councillor in the area. My name is Markan Brown, I'm the general manager of Basketball Itagor, and I have with me Simon Eddy and Marie Taylor-Cypher, both are from the board. And Simon helps out with our commercial relationships and Marie with legal advice as well as helping us with our junior programs. So once again, we're here this morning to talk about our application for a civic grant to help support us with the court hire for the Oshana Gold Nuggets home games. This is an arrangement we have with the EDG Centre, who are the main suppliers of our court space for all of our programs, from the elite right down to the youth. So, yeah, thank you again for your support in past years. It's been vital as far as keeping us going, and we strongly believe in the importance of the elite programs and helping us support the whole triangle with the big wide base, which is right down to the youth. So thank you very much. It's been vital as far as keeping us going and being able to have such a great influence on the youth. A good example of that is our player coach, Mark Tickle, Dunedin homegrown talent, and doing a fantastic job sort of running our elite programs right down to our youth. A great example of that is the basketball school, which he initiated a couple of years ago in the mornings, and it really helped to provide for the high school students, which are a very tough sort of group to keep going in activity in sport. And the results he's getting with them are just fantastic. He's having over 100, some mornings, and he's got a registered base of, you know, 120, 130 young high school players from all the different sort of high schools around Dunedin, and they're just producing great results. We've had some national championships recently and improved results across the board for them. So thank you again, and if you've got any questions, we're happy to answer them.
councillor Thompson?
Markan, I'm just wanting to understand a little bit of the budget that you've got here, because you've got the revenue in there from the DCC, which has yet to be approved. But the doortakings, what do you charge for people to come to Nuggets games?
We charge, we've actually had to put our prices up since previous years. We charge $17 for an adult, $12 for a student, and $7 for a child, and we have a family pass at $35.
The reason I ask is that $30,000 for gate takings seems to be an extraordinary, like, figure, given you're getting crowds to those home games of well over 1,000 people, up to 1,500 people. So I'm struggling to see where that figure comes from.
Yes, well, basically, we have quite a large commitment of tickets that go out to our sponsors and different funders and community groups that help us out as well. We also look after a large sort of volunteer base. So a lot of the crowd is actually there on a sponsor's ticket or on a complimentary ticket. And we're working on, obviously, trying to fill it up with the paying public. And traditionally, we have a sort of a bit of a slow start at the start of the year, and we've been lucky with some good results that the crowd numbers have driven up as the season goes on. But, yeah, that basically, it's not a huge money spinner for us, I guess, the gate. I guess we are quite heavily reliant on a few other income sources as well.
So what were your gate takings in the 13, well, you're still in the 13, 14 year, but what are your gate takings in this year?
So far, we're tracking along just on budget, and I believe we will be getting around the $40,000 mark for the year. We've got an extra gate this year.
If I could just quantify that, the ticket prices were increased on average 50% this year, and that's because we received a lot of feedback that ticket prices were very low in the marketplace for a sporting event of that calibre. So we did a study of other NBL teams and raised ticket prices to what is the market average across the country for similar organizations. What that's been is that we are on target for this year's budget in terms of revenue incoming, but also with some spare capacity in the stadium, we do have the ability to hopefully exceed income expectations in that area. So it's, for us, it's about, I suppose, taking a more commercial approach this year, and we believe that come the end of the year, that will reflect in the gate as well.
All right, thank you. councillor Wilson?
I just wanted to tease out your submission, which talks about $100,000 court spend, but your actual application talks about $45,000 in the budget. Now, here you're mixing two activities, is that correct? One is the application, this one's about Nuggets only?
Yes.
But your submission refers to basketball Itagor generally?
Yes, well, as I said, it is an integrated thing. We don't look at the Nuggets as, we do obviously treat them separately in many respects, but I guess we do feel there's a really positive influence on the wider basketball scene. So when we look at all of the competitions used and the development, training, so the practices for the youth, that is where it supports the EDG Centre with a very large spend. And I think, you know, all of our competitions are growing, so I think there's been a positive growth thing for basketball as far as our numbers go, and it is helping EDG Centre.
And this is a handout which you didn't speak to, but just your middle graph, the growth in player participation across genders of all ages, I'm just checking, that, so this year, or the 2013 year, if I looked at just that figure for the secondary schools, you're saying there are almost 120 new players in this year?
That's actually a team, team numbers. Marie?
So is growth means that these are all new, or is it that's the total number of teams?
The graph is indicating the increase. And so are you asking for the secondary schools between 2012 and 2013?
Yeah, it looks like there's 120 new players, is that correct? Is that how I read that graph, or is it?
No, this is grown up here, sorry.
So there's 100, there'd be teams? And so there's 100, you can see just over, I think it was about 112, 109, I think, teams in 2012, and then there's, it must be about 119.
Okay. Sorry, I was taking the growth in player numbers as being the graph hidden to mean that that was the growth, sorry.
Well, obviously, teams are consisting of players, so...
Yeah, no, that's fine, it's not a growth chart.
councillor Newn?
My question's probably for Markan. The total income, just looking on your budget, is 460-odd. Roughly half of that is sponsorship, and I just wondered how much of that sponsorship, and I don't want to know the details, but how much of that sponsorship is short-term and long-term? Short-term being on a yearly basis, and what is the balance that's typically tied up for two-plus years?
Yes, I can add to that, I can answer that, sorry. And I think Simon will probably add to it from a commercial perspective, but, yeah, we do, we are working on longer-term relationships rather than just being a year-by-year proposition, and Simon can probably add to that, his impact.
Historically, predominantly VBOs done its sponsorship across the organization on an annual basis, and it's a commercial realization that that's a laborious, time-consuming thing when you're revisiting the same people year and year again. So this year, there was a much greater focus on signing two, three, and five-year sponsors. On average, we converted probably around 25 to 30% of our sponsor base to multiple-year sponsorships, and certainly that's a trend that we intend to continue in signing people up for the longer term because it means we can have more sustainable relationships and continuity of income.
councillor Cowan?
Just a brief follow-up on Richard's question, on councillor Thompson's question. Have you considered discounts for people rather than free tickets? In the sense that instead of having half of them paying an amount which you've increased this year, or whatever proportion it is, saying instead of the adult $17 ticket, we'll let you have it for 10, or whatever? Is that, I mean, because that would make a huge difference if there's a lot of them, and still be people who you're wanting to be nice to and say thank you for your help, but they would still be in a better position?
I can probably answer that, having run the cutter on the commercial arrangements this year. We do have a contracted number of tickets, which are part of sponsorship arrangements, which are unavoidable, and they're longstanding. When we were setting ticket prices for this year and bringing them to market level, we were aware that that could result in some challenges which were unforeseen. So on one hand, we were trying to establish a ticket price which was market average, but we do have special offers and promotions for particular games around community groups. So we have particular... So, we have particular organisations that we offer discounted tickets to, some are sponsors, some are wider parts of the community. And we also have various promotions, we do things like bring a, buy an adult ticket and bring a child for free. So, it was more about not devaluing your product, but at the same time maximising participation and accessibility. If that answers your question.
Totally, it seems to me that one of the things you could do, I mean, you've got an arrangement saying you get whatever it is as a result of whatever. You could presumably say to some of those people, change those things a bit and say to some of those, would you accept not having twenty free tickets to the games or something but paying so much for the tickets? I mean, you can go back and.
Of course, all of our sponsorships are commercial negotiations and we receive a weekly review of the utilisation of tickets that have been issued to sponsors or gate sales in terms of what's been issued and what's actually gone through the gate. The uptake of the tickets that we are contractually obliged to provide to sponsors are usually in the ninety, ninety-five percent region and not many of our sponsors would be willing to relinquish any of their comp tickets because they're just a longstanding part of any commercial relationship. And I would think that's probably largely across the board with any sporting team.
We're not a sponsor? We're not, we're not a sponsor?
The DCC, sorry. You're a community funding group, so, yeah, there.
So, you're acknowledged as a funder and not a sponsor?
So, those people aren't part of it?
councillor Hawke.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions about access also from a slightly different perspective. If one of the reasons that we're funding the Nuggets is as an inspiring thing for our young people in the developmental side of your business, how are you managing the access to those games for those young people? Because we can sit around and talk about how tickets costs are too low all day, but that's still going to be too much for, I'm assuming, some of the developmental players that you're targeting. How are you balancing that with your commercial market level box office model?
Yes, well, basically we, obviously our child prices are not probably exorbitant, so there's all, all children up until the age of high school age can come in for a child ticket, so it's fairly accessible.
How much is that, sorry?
Seven dollars, but as Simon said earlier, we've run some things like an adult can bring a child free as well. So, that's been quite a good policy or a good measure for us to take in the past as well and we've used that to some success. So, and occasionally we will get a team to maybe help with the clean up afterwards, so we'll provide them with a complimentary ticket or we use some of them for floor sweepers. So, we use quite a lot of the different young developmental players for different roles as well as giving them good access to tickets.
Sorry, can I just add to that?
Please do.
I've coached children's manyball for the last three years and fairly regularly I've been given through at the school where I coach free tickets for children, so generally I can give out a player of the day will get a free ticket to the game or a couple of tickets. And I've noticed that it's really, the parents will come along, if the children get a free ticket, generally the whole family comes along and it's actually really effective way of encouraging the kids to play. Then they come to the Nuggets and it's all really exciting and the family gets involved and the sibling might come along after and start playing. So, that's been quite an effective thing that I've noticed that we've done.
And I think just further that it's worth noting that the NBL standard across the country for a family ticket because basketball's largely a family game. Our experience is that parents have children that are involved and it goes full cycle, so there's a big emphasis on parents bringing their kids who are participants. We're one of a very small number of teams where the family ticket is three children. We, a lot of the research that we had found that people were buying family tickets which were two adults and two children and then buying an additional child ticket. So, we allow three children as part of our family ticket which increases accessibility as well.
And just, oh, this stuff, I mean, the basketball stuff sounds great and the Edgar Centre stuff sounds great, but again, I mean, there are costs associated with that. I mean, as Basketball Otago, and I know it's, I mean, it is relevant, but happy with the facilities available in the community that are available for young basketball players, developmental players that they don't have to pay to use?
Yes, we, you know, really thrilled with the facility that is the Edgar Centre, it's an amazing indoor facility and a lot of teams that come down here are just from other regions and that's even Auckland and Wellington, you know, comment on how lucky we are to have such an accessible space right in the middle of town, basically, and great car parking and access and things like that, so we're really pleased with that. We've also taken, over the past couple of years, that high school programme that we have run has been open to the participants at no cost. So, we've targeted funding groups to help us try and cover the cost of the court hire and some of the costs associated with that, but it's helped, you know, get that access up.
That's great, thank you.
councillor McTannish.
Thank you, just one question and that's the development, you have a development line item here in terms of your expenses which is court hire. Is that also at the Edgar Centre?
Yes.
Do you have funding that comes in that is specifically tagged to that or does it not make any difference to you whether we tag funding to your Nuggets court hire or to your development court hire?
Yes, well, the funding that the DCC has provided has gone specifically to the court hire by way of a credit with the Edgar Centre. But we do obviously have other costs with the development and they're not in there probably the competition costs. So, yeah, we look at local funders to help us with that community trust and other charities.
I understand that, but I guess what I'm trying to ascertain is whether, if there was greater support around this table for supporting development rather than supporting Nugget Court Hire fees, whether that makes a difference to your bottom line or whether you could just as easily find another funder that would, that you could apply funds for the Nuggets from?
Yes, well, I guess we're barely consistently hitting, you know, targets with other funders. Well, not, when I say barely consistently, it's trended down over the last few years, but we've obviously, you know, we try and maximise our funding opportunities as much as we can and they're shrinking rather than growing, so there isn't another funder we could, we could find to, you know, cover the gap if we lost some of our funding. So, but, you know, it does help wherever it goes, I guess it's in the pot to help with court hire, so it really helps. And I think, yeah, it's hard to find in this day and age more funding out there, it's going, it's trending the other way.
Thank you.
councillor Thompson.
Are your corporate sponsors locked in already for next year or is that speculative at this point?
I haven't actually got a copy of the budget in front of me to refer to.
We've got barter card down here at twenty-five thousand and corporate sponsorship, two hundred and ten thousand.
Right, okay, but on the basis that the forecast is similar to this year's numbers, then yes. Barter cards are a bit of a funny beast, it's funny money, but in terms of our commercial commitment for the coming year, as I think I alluded to, I think we've probably signed an excess of thirty percent of our current sponsors and we don't see any of them going anywhere at this point.
And the other question is, you guys have got a really professional organisation and you've come from a situation where you were just about out the back door a few years ago to a situation where you're probably a case study for how a number of other sports should do things. But, the city council's been there through the tough times to enable you to get to that. What's your plan to wean yourself off city council help? Because there are other people being told no and were told no last year when you got told yes. So, you understand the difficulty we face and that's why I ask about the gate charges. I accept you've got to build a business, it seems to me you're doing that very well and I wonder if you have a plan where you could take those gate takings to that next step and wean yourself off, is that, is that an aim?
Indeed it is and the BBO board meets outside of normal session at the moment for an additional meeting once a month to talk about our one, two and three year strategy. And key to that is reliance on commercial funding and sponsorship as opposed to grants. And it's great, wonderful to hear that you recognise the BBO has gone from here to here. As I'm sure everyone in the room knows, it's often the last ten percent which is the hardest push. We've recently had a fairly substantial change in board members and we feel that we've got a very, very good range of skills around the table at the moment that are working together very, very well to facilitate that move. And an indication of that is that at present we are talking to a number of large national firms about long term sponsorship that I would say is probably in its, you know, final sort of closing months of getting across the line. These are relatively big deals that don't happen overnight, but it is paramount to us to rely on commercial sponsorship for the Nuggets and to, as you say, wean ourselves off of reliance on community grants.
Thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you for your time.
mister Weatherall. Saddle Hill Community Board, welcome.
For those that are not familiar, I'd like to introduce our deputy chair, Pam Gima. We'll share the presentation if we can today. The reality is we haven't changed our presentation or submission from the draft annual plan because we didn't want to make anything harder than you guys than the work that you've already got at hand. Not in our submission, but I just want to note because it's quite topical, is around the Freedom Campaign challenges or issues or the trial that the Dunedin City Council is currently operating. Obviously, we've got a trial site being the Ocean View Camping Ground that's underway out there and it's been really successful. The reality is it's probably too successful, I would think, from the initial trial submission that, or the plan that the Dunedin City Council put into place. What I would say is that the majority of people are really, really supportive of the trial, the trial and the concept in our community. There's a couple of people that aren't for sure and it's, you're never going to get a hundred percent satisfaction, I think, especially in the local government. But the majority of people are really supportive. What I would say is though, if the Dunedin City Council are committed to this, then they need to put the resource into that. Obviously, the parks and rec staff are somewhat limited, all the work that they're currently doing is just another thing that they've got to manage. So, maybe that's something that we should look at. We put the signs up and we put the concept in there and then there was, that's where it sort of stopped. And that's where I think our community board have picked up in a pretty positive sort of consultative manner, but it's us going door knocking. So, the immediate name is, let's see, what's your opinion? Because that hasn't happened to date and that's a concern. But we've done some of that consultation, we've fed it back through Richard and Lisa to ensure that there's, you know, a two way process and that's.
Yeah, footpaths and curbing, the council and the board have received a number of complaints about the lack of footpaths from residents in the area. So, we are concerned that there is a gap there. We appreciate the work of Michael Harrison that he's been doing in Brighton recently in terms of getting improvements there, so I just want to acknowledge that. And we're also grateful for the walkway from Green Island to Waldron Vale, but the remaining areas remain unfoot path and there's nowhere for people to safely get off the road when the traffic comes through. We'd like to see that as a priority, we feel that that's quite dangerous. And overall, our priority in the area is to get most of our built up areas with footpaths, so that's what we're seeking long term. But short term, we'd like to see some of those high traffic areas with footpaths to provide a safety escape from traffic really.
The Brighton Domain, the reality is it's still status quo from when we chatted at the draft annual plan. We've got local people that are committed to supporting us in kind, so that's fantastic and some real estate companies that are in behind it. From the Parks team, we're committed to complete the project at Walden Park which has some funding available. So, once we get that project done, the communication interaction we've had with the Parks team is that, then we'll move on to the Brighton Domain. But there is, we're going into another winter, we've had a reasonable amount of rain and the reality is that that ground won't be sustainable for the whole of the winter. So, that's a concern.
Back to roading, we appreciate the challenges that council face and do acknowledge the improvements that have already been made on the roads such as Skoggs Hill. But safety issues are still intensified by the lack of sale on a lot of our roads in the area, particularly for example McMaster Road, Chain Hills Road, Green Island Bosch Roads. We'd like to request that the council allocate funds in 2016 and for ongoing selling of our roads in our area and would prefer that funding for this be reinstated as early as we can. We continue to identify this need in the community plan and will continue to support requests from our residents. We do not acknowledge the fact that a lot of our residents rely on rainwater and with the dust and stuff off the rides, it's also a concern in terms of the quality of the water.
And the topic of issue again is Saddle Hill and the reality is that our community board are thankful for the Dunedin City Council and the huge amount of work that's gone into the environmental court decision outcome, but there is no outcome because it's been challenged again and we've got no final outcome to date. And I know, I'm sure the councillors share that frustration with us. The quarrying continues, yes, it doesn't modify the skyline, but it does continue in there and I understand, you know, the consensus or the discussion is still there. But we would ask the Dunedin City Council to stop all quarrying or at least work with the environmental court, with the provider, that we actually protect what we've got, we've lost a huge amount, but can we just plead that actually we stop all quarrying there altogether? Thank you for your question, obviously we're more than happy to answer any questions, but we do thank you as the leaders of this city, this community for the work that you are doing, you've got a huge job and rest sure we are thankful and also with the staff that we're working with on a day to day basis as well.
councillor McTannish.
Thank you, thank you both for coming in. And just on the Freedom Camping issue, in terms of parks and reserves, I hear you about the consultation. Is there anything else that you feel needs to be, needs to be done in order to support that trial which currently isn't being done that you would like to see done?
Just the management of it, I think councillor, because the reality is the signs go up and that's it. So, there's no management of how many campers are coming there and on a regular basis we're seeing, you know, above twenty campers. Not so much in the last probably two or three weeks, but the signs say five to five, but we're still seeing fourteen, you know, on a pretty regular basis. So, something's gone wrong there, you know? And, yeah, we're pretty trusting of people, but the reality is it's over and above what we've told the community, what we've advertised in the brochures. But it's just not, not being managed, I guess.
So, you feel that there's a need for basically a regular presence that is checking, yeah?
Yeah, I understand the security company are doing some statistics, but they close the gate, they go past at eight o'clock, but there's a huge amount of camps that are coming in after eight o'clock.
Okay.
So, it's that period there, you know, that the statistics that I guess the council are keeping versus what's actually happening, I think there is a wee bit of grayness there.
Yeah, okay, all right. And in terms of the Brighton Domain, I don't know if you've seen the staff comment, but that is that they would, they have included in a review of improvements for sports fields, staff will continue to work with the board to identify areas that can be improved with voluntary input from the community. What I sense though is what you're saying is that there is, there is need for a plan, an overall plan first before the volunteers will commit to input, is that right?
Yeah, that's right, I haven't seen that staff comments, that's new, thank you for that. So, we've supplied, the community board supplied a huge amount of, I guess, ideas, concepts about how we can put a plan together. But acknowledging also that they've said, hey, let's just, can we just do one project at a time? And because Walden Park sort of jumped the Brighton Domain because there's some funds come available from the tree felling project and there's a need to, I guess, spend that money first. So, we're working with, you know, the team for sure, just acknowledging we're going into a winter now, that work hasn't been done for another year yet. And I would say maintenance of the drainage system out there is one of our leading concerns.
Thank you.
councillor Wilson.
Just in relation to Saddle Hill, and I may have picked up on the innuendo in your comment, are you wanting us to ensure that any contracts that we have for acquired material do not come out of Saddle Hill?
I would be disappointed Dunedin City Council have contracts with metal coming out of that. If the Dunedin City Council. If the Dunedin City Council were saying, no more quarrying, don't modify our skyline, I'd be really disappointed to hear that we're getting metal coming out of there to use for council contracts.
I'm not sure that our contracts require or actually go into there, but it's an interesting point that you make. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawke.
Thank you. Great to hear that you went door-to-door canvassing people in the area around the Freedom Camping issue. I mean, I applaud you for taking active steps there. I wonder if such an approach wasn't considered around the issue of extending the provision of curbside recycling in the community board area, which, you know, is, it's a far smaller and far easier group to campus, I would imagine.
Yep. So that contact was done through the council, through Ian Featherston. And my understanding is really, really successful. Positive feedback from a survey that was carried out and that has been extended, is the best of my knowledge.
I guess my question is what other issues, if any, are you using that approach to canvass the opinions of your community? Aside from the Freedom Camping issue?
I guess. We picked that up as a direct consultation because we felt it was a really topical concern and that we were getting effectively feedback coming through, back through the public media that we hadn't been privy to. So when the ODT reporter rang me and said, I've had five people ring up and complain about the Freedom Campaign, and I was, well, I only know of one. Well, as our community board only know of one, and the best of my knowledge, the Dunedin City Council have only had one official complaint about it from one person, multiple complaints from one person. Then it's like, oh, we're missing the mark here, you know, so we're going to have to go and do some catch-up with people.
And is the community board against quarrying and mining more broadly or just in Saddle Hill? I guess the question is, is it a question of ethics or aesthetics that's behind that opposition?
There's huge significance with Saddle Hill, as anybody in New Zealand, as well as Dunedin, would know because of how it come about. I know it's a topical issue for the Moskew-Tory Community Board as well. Are we against quarrying? Our board haven't discussed that. We are against quarrying at the Saddle Hill site though.
Thank you. Commissioner Anu.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you for the submission, Scott and Pam. My question's around the Brighton Domain. It follows on from councillor McTavish, re-drainage and the basic maintenance that should be occurring. You've been coming in telling us the story for two, three years at least. And I understand there's two parts with CapEx, which is the longer term, but maintenance. So can you advise us what has been done by way of maintenance in the last two or three years? You know, when you brought this issue to us, are we doing what we should be doing with regards to maintenance on the Brighton Domain?
There was some basic maintenance improvements done about three or four years ago. But the reality is there's still a number of areas on that domain that draw or continue to haul a lot of water. So that would be of concern, given especially the environment that we're based out there. So one must suspect that the maintenance is not being done satisfactorily. The reality is, I'm not a groundsman, I don't understand that all, and I have to take the staff's, you know, expert opinion on that. But as an observer with unqualified eye, I'd suggest that we're not doing something because that water continues to pull and that ground continues to be in unplayable condition.
Can you continue to come and tell us?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanus.
Thank you very much for your kind comments regarding Michael Harrison's efforts. It's nice to see that you noted those. Regarding the footpaths and the ability to actually get off the road when there's traffic coming. I understand there's quite a few roads that have quite a deep channel immediately off the shoulder and there is nowhere to go. Given that there just isn't the money to fully form footpaths, would an interim measure where at least an area that isn't a formal footpath, but an area where people could step off the road, be made available, and at least not say one side, would that be something that you would support?
We certainly would support anything that provides an opportunity for people to have a space to walk in relative safety. The area from Green Island to Wadronville is an example of that where it was, it's not a formal footpath, but it's formed as an area that people can go.
So there is an escape route, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Regarding the Freedom Campers, I can certainly concur every time, and I go out to Brighton fairly regularly. Every evening, there's always been at least 10 campers when I've seen them there. And the trial was supposed to be put for five. Given that it's a fairly large camping ground and there's a good set of fairly new toilets there and given also that the local shops must have recently well out of it, would you be amenable to, you know, after the trial, raising the number to say 10 or 15? If the local community felt that it could handle that kind of volume? Obviously, the demand is there. I'm just wondering how we would be able to balance that demand with any of the pressures that you feel on that area. So can you give us an idea of what you think would be a reasonable level of demand that that area could meet?
Sure. So I think the reality is that in the number trials leading up to this formalized trial of number recordings, we're constantly seeing from the Kooka Resit to Tari Mouth approximately 17 to 18 campers on the majority of summer nights. So we already knew that there's a huge volume greater than five, you know, so it's about ensuring that we don't set ourselves up for failure, I think. What we've seen is rather than, you know, to the Kooka Resit, to all the way down to Tari Mouth, is they've come into this concentrated area, which is what we've asked people to do effectively because that's where the facilities are. Even the chap who's made a number of complaints to the council is not against Freedom Campaign. He's not against the camping facility being there. It's just about the management of that. So I think with some good consultation, communication with the community, for sure, I think the number could be raised from five. Alternatively, the community board are happy to work with the council and staff about potential alternative sites or additional sites to the Ocean View site as well.
So what sort of management would be required to say, manage a summer peak of 15, perhaps? I mean, is that something that you think is reasonable if it was properly managed?
I wouldn't want to put a figure on it, councillor, because, yeah, I think with some communication with the nearby neighbours, who are directly affected neighbours, I think we could come up with an agreeable number. And with additional of that, I think, identify an additional site as well.
And my last question is regarding the Saddle Hill quarry contracts. Were you aware that a lot of the Saddle Hill quarrying actually went into the Marmar Airport for the DCC and also for the recent addition to the State Highway 88 stadium bypass? So you're aware that there's been a history of DCC taking a lot of the material from Saddle Hill. Given that that is the cheapest source of chip and given that we're really under quite a lot of pressure to actually find the cheapest suppliers of things, how would you prefer to see DCC policy organised? Would you prefer to say, DCC simply won't buy from Saddle Hill, even if they are considerably cheaper? And if so, doesn't that just simply load costs onto the DCC when a lot of other users and contractors will go to Saddle Hill anyway because they're cheapest? I mean, is there a solution that you can see for us in this difficult situation?
Yeah, sure. And I acknowledge that money versus, I guess, the value that the community places on Saddle Hill. And the reality is that there's huge value placed on Saddle Hill and we're getting weekly approaches, as I know that the council generally are, as well as the Moskew-Tory Community Board are, around effectively, let's not do any more damage to the Saddle Hill that's already been done. You know, there's some attempted protection of the skyline and I know that, you know, the outcome of the environmental court was, let's not do any more damage to what's already been done. So at a minimum, we'd continue to plead that that is status quo there.
So you think that if the DCC doesn't take any gravel from Saddle Hill, mate, and we decide as a policy that we're just not going to do that, you think that that will actually have a positive effect or do you think that other contractors will just go and get it there anyway?
Oh, I don't know. Again, I'm not in the construction business, so yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kell.
Just further to that quarrying thing, please, councillor, this has got halfway. The other alternative appears to be the positive effect of taking the hill off, the rest of the hill off the top and signal hill at the bottom of that where the other quarrying happens. It's not just cheaper on Saddle Hill, but if it wasn't used, the other option becomes, I understand, a monopoly, which means that not only is it currently more expensive, but it has the ability to be a lot more expensive if we didn't have any on Saddle Hill. Would the community be bearing that in mind, that it's a reasonable sort of likelihood? Would the protection of the skyline be the significantly most important thing? And you could live with still using it if it wasn't a skyline issue?
I think that it's a landmark in the areas. I think we're really concerned about the loss of the landmark. It's something that Captain Koff identified as something that everybody could see. By losing Saddle Hill, we're kind of losing something. I think if I could put the analogy, it's kind of like mining in the national parks. It's like we want to protect something. I'm sorry, that doesn't quite answer the question, but I think it's an emotional issue for people within the city area as well as just the our community board.
Commissioner Law.
Yes, thank you, Bishop. Scott, my question was in relation to the fact that we've got no ceiling budget at the moment and you've made a request here for at least four different roads. Are they in the priority written in the submission that you would like to see them sealed in? Like is it Skogg's Hill Road, Campers for McMasters, Chain Hills and Green Island Bush Roads or?
Yes, they are in our priority.
That's in the audit, like, seven down.
And that still is reextended in our annual plan, which we continue to work with the transportation team on?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you.
Mr. Feather. Moskew-Tory Community Board, welcome.
Good morning to the councillors. Thank you. My business this morning is, you'll be sure, I'm here in support of the Tari Facilities Trust in respect to the council granting its $30,000. What I'd like to see is the proposal that was put in the draft plan turned into a reality. The interest in the community and the way in which the community has embraced this challenge is something to behold. The board has identified the vehicle to manage this investigative work that the council is putting in our direction in a very able body, the Tari Facilities Trust. And it was chosen primarily because it already existed and it came with credibility. So having to start from scratch wasn't an issue. Maybe at this stage, in the submission outlines the progress that had been made since January up until the time the submission was lodged. And since that time, the trust has met and is considering expressions of interest to populate the trust board itself and taking on board the depth of interest that the community has shown. And I'd have to like also to point out that such is the interest that the local college, the Tari College, approached myself to talk to the year 13 students about doing a research project as part of the NCEA papers about a new pool in Moskew. And so here we have interest being shown by a younger group in trying to identify exactly what kind of pool the area needs, who might use it and where it might go. Their work will be of much interest and I'm sure very informative. So in closing, and that aspect of the board's submission is that I strongly urge you all to get fully behind this proposal and support it by agreeing to grant $30,000 to the Tari Facilities Trust. In the second part of the submission about record and road, our submission is really all about the prioritization of council staff work, schedules and timeline achievements. They are at the basis of our submission and the board is called for staff updates. So the staff are looking into the questions that we are raising. But from earlier years, planned deliberations, quite an element of this project was indicated as being the funding. And in particular, funding for quite a large portion of the project was to come from existing budgets. So the board really wants to be assured that those monies are there for this project to continue. For that, I close my submission. Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner Stans.
Thank you for your submission, Bill. And here it's noted the $30,000 budget to go towards the Tari Community Facilities Trust to get this pool project back on the track. I noticed that we do have a submission saying that $30,000 isn't enough and that council should be providing $50,000. Has the community board had that information and what's their position on it?
No, the board hasn't had that and I must say that reading this morning's OTT, I think it was, there was a mention of a submission for additional funding. I can't talk about it because I have no knowledge of it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Appreciate your submission.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker. Chalmers Community Board, welcome.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Man. Nice to get you all early on while you're awake. I'll see how you're doing later on because I'm here. Thank you. Here at 4.50. Okay, thank you obviously for letting me speak on behalf of the community board and the members of Dunedin's West Harbour. I won't like, as I've done in previous years, just regurgitate what is written in the submission. Obviously, you've well versed it via the pre-annual, sorry, the draft annual plan. And it was very good post that to see council working with the board to actually address some of the issues that have been raised. What I do want to do however, is speak to three particular issues that came about as a result of a very successful annual plan roadshow that was held in Port Chalmers. And the three issues that really came to the fore there were, as ever, the completion of these cycle walkway to Port Chalmers, the sickle problem that is rather pervasive in Dunedin's West Harbour. And surprisingly, the top issue was the 30K speed limit in George Street, Port Chalmers. This may have been rather topical because we had the annual plan roadshow just as the speed limit trial was taken off. And so it was obviously in people's minds and it was certainly, probably 100% of the residents who did speak to us were rather peeved that it, I guess they weren't aware of the trial period. They thought it was going to be permanent. And they were all very supportive of the trial. And since the board has put in the submission, we have had the report on the trial from Ron Minimer, which really did show that the speed trial worked. And the stats show that under the current 50K speed limit, the trucks have an average speed of 42.2Ks. And when the 30K speed trial was on, that reduced significantly down to 30.6. And the overall average speed came down from 44.2 to 33.2. So what it does show is it's very... So what it does show is it's very successful. And in this report, the speed trial is very strongly backed up by Port Chalmers Police and of course, the Port Chalmers businesses. And I'm sure you've probably got other submissions that probably are in support of the speed trial. So in the submission, we did suggest obviously that you should consider, council should consider perhaps looking at bringing the trial back for next season. And of course, that has cost implications. I think this trial cost, I think around $6,000. So I guess the suggestion would be, would it be more logical to think along the lines of making it permanent rather than going through a bunch of trial periods that are just going to have cost implications? So that's something to consider. Obviously, the completion of the cycle walkway to Port Chalmers is something you've certainly longstanding councillors have heard me talk about for many years and the board and the public. I really do want to congratulate the mayor and many councillors and staff in particular for their continued advocacy on this issue. And I personally feel, and I'd be happy to hear your feedback, that for, you know, after many, many years of trial, the ducks certainly are very much in a row. And I, I think Dunedin, the West Harbour and people who are going to visit here in the future can hopefully look forward to NZTA funding the 2015-18 round and take, take what is currently a fantastic amenity all the way through to Port Chalmers. And the other issue that came up in the annual plan roadshow was the sickle moor problem. And again, I'm getting too congratulatory here, but I congratulate council, some councillors, Andrew, Ginty and also staff. We've had a sit down recently and it looks like we're threshing out a forward plan to begin getting on top of the sickle moor problems again. Congratulations. I just wanted to speak, as I always do, to item seven, which is the, about the cruise ships. And as I have said many times before, the $2,000 that is given to, to the volunteer visitors information centre group, which is run, it's probably a group of about 60 people who give up hundreds and thousands of hours each year to give their time and give a great welcome to the visitors that come to Dunedin. It's probably the best $2,000 that council has ever spent and hopefully continues to spend. So yeah, I'll close there, but obviously, you know, happy to field any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
First question is on the Aramwana Wharf. And I'm not sure what progress has been made over the last year. I looked at it the other day from the other side of the harbour. And I'm just wondering whether it would assist to have timeframes in place that we expect the work to be done in order to focus the funders. Because what I think would be really terrible is have made a decision last year that it goes on without any changes over the next few years.
Yep, I agree. And it might be pertinent, perhaps, to ask Councillor Noon on the progress.
Councillor Wilson will be pleased to hear that hold up as counsel. So referring, you referred to the report that came to us, counsel, last year. So that report is still lying on the table. So what the Aramwana League, who is the community group who will drive this project, want is that, that that report is uplifted. Council make a commitment to maintaining any enhanced wharf, i.e. the straw and what's there. And so if council can make that commitment, that an upgraded wharf will become an asset ongoing and that the city will maintain it. That's the key decision that this council needs to make to trigger the community group that will find the funding, make the project work.
Thank you. And second question, Worship. Could I ask staff to prepare for next week? The cost seems on how much it costs to have speed restrictions in Dunedin for their cruise ships? Because I think it's really unfair that we're looking at 5,800 here in isolation, albeit recognising it's an NZTA road. But we don't have an understanding of what it costs in the George Street and the Otter for traffic management? Because I think they both have effects. Can I just clarify? So you asked, what is the cost of the comparable restrictions that we have in the city centre? Well, we've got the city centre temporary traffic control for cruise ships. And at the moment, we're only looking, there's criticism that it's cost 5,800 for George Street and Port Chalmers. How much does it actually cost in Dunedin in comparison?
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you. I think it takes touch on that. I guess when I was reading your submission, Steve, I just thought, why are they advocating for another trial? Why aren't they asking? And the response from staff seems to indicate that the ball is very much in NZTA's court around it. What signals are you getting from NZTA in terms of their willingness to formalise the, the trial as a permanent feature?
NZTA themselves, I don't think we've had the conversation because it has gone through Ron, although I know they were obviously happy to support the trial. And the trial was very dependent on, there was one objection from, from the CEO at Port Ataga, who is not very much on board with it. We've sat down with him a number of times, so they're more than happy to, if it was to be, to be formalised as a permanent, they're very happy. So I'd imagine the best guess would be that there'd be support above it.
Councillor Vandervass.
You mentioned the sickle moor issue.
Yep.
I've previously suggested that the wonderful thing about sicklemores is that when you cut them green, they are immediately good firewood. And quite rare in that respect. You don't have to try and start to have it burn well. Do you see any potential for a community firewood project where, rather than just letting individuals go and help themselves, which I believe raises some safety issues with the staff? Do you see any potential for organising, that is to say, you or the community board organising a community firewood project where groups of people interested in access to a lot of good firewood could simply go in and clean up the sickle moor problem?
Yes, we're doing it. Certainly part of the discussion. I was fortunate enough to have a sit down yesterday with Lisa Wheeler and councillors Noon and McTavish were there. And what is going, what is going to happen for the new financial year is going to be a plan put in place, pretty much based on location, agencies involved. Because unfortunately in the West Harbour, we're talking about on track, NZTA, private land, blah, blah, blah. And so, for example, trees that size, who can, who can go and deal to it? Can the public do it? Does an agency need to do it? Is it next to a road? So those, in essence, there'll be a formulaic approach to how one can deal with the trees. And certainly part of that is, because there's a new system now called basal bark spraying, which doesn't involve poisons. What happens is you put diesel around the tree, it dies. And as they die, the suggestion is that would be a good, as they're dying or about dead, you come in and remove, remove the trees of firewood. So there'll be conversations with the local lions and rotary. And obviously, people like the golf club and other groups who have traditionally taken, taken trees when council have to remove them there. So absolutely yes. But more importantly, I'm really, you know, it's, after many years of knocking on the door, I'm very glad to see that finally a system may be put in place to address what is going to be phenomenally difficult problem to overcome.
So you do see yourself as empowered as a community to actually address this issue yourselves and the impediments from the DCC are not your major problem at the moment?
West Harbour is tremendously empowered.
Wonderful. Cool. The other issue that I had to raise was the, you talk about the sea, the cycleway. The, I read with some concern that there is a proposal to spend millions of dollars to move the railway line further into the sea to create room for a short section of cycleway. To me, this looks A, unaffordable, B, very long term because of the time required for the settling of the new railway line position. Do you see any other option for that short section of cycleway in terms of being able to facilitate the cycleway without having to move the railway line? Have you looked at the options for that?
Yes, there's always other options, Councillor Vandervass. But I think if you look internationally, one of the biggest problems that non-successful cycle paths have is lack of continuity. So I think by breaking the continuity of the proposal would certainly be a great disincentive to people using it, which ultimately defeats the purpose perhaps of, of having it.
I would agree entirely that you have to have that continuity. My question is, do you have to move a railway line to achieve that continuity? Given that there are potentially millions to be spent, would it not be cheaper to create a custom, wonderful architectural tube flyover to have, to have the cycle scheduled? It would still be cheaper to move the railway line.
Can I point out here that it won't be the community board that designs it? Given that, I know I appreciate the question, but that it will be on track or NZL, whomever, will be taking responsibility for that anyway. So I'd suggest that that conversation is, we would need to have with them rather.
That's what worries me. And if NZTA are designing it, I think that...
No, not NZTA. It could be a combination of NZTA and Kiwi Road on track because they own the land.
Yeah, that was my worry and which is why I was asking that perhaps the community board may be able to come up with some imaginative alternative, given that there is the potential to spend an awful lot of money to actually bridge that gap.
In a perfect world, I absolutely agree with you, Councillor Vandervass, but you know, I certainly can't, I can't think of any of us who are structural engineers but on the board. But you know, I think it's a great, a great suggestion. And I believe, you know, alternatives perhaps can be looked at. But my feeling is that NZTA are fairly, fairly committed to forwarding this project.
Thank you. Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. I hate having to ask a question that I know the answer, but I think it's...
It's best kind.
Thank you for your brilliant... With regards to the $6,000 that you, that you told us, Steve, that was the cost associated with the 30K traffic management plan? Are you able to share with us whether the board contributed to that and how much?
The board, I might have to call on your memory here, Councillor Noon, but the board either, the board, the board either contributed nothing or it was a nominal amount.
It was somewhere between $800 and $1,000.
You don't know either. I don't think it was that much actually.
We can sort that out. When I was asking whether the board contributed, the answer is yes. And the other question was around the transportation operations reprioritised the work in the ward area to be able to gain funding to do this traffic management plan. Is that correct? Correct. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Steve?
Just as I was beginning to have fun.
Yes. We've got a lot more fun to get through on the front.
I'll see you at 4.50, Mr Mayor.
Thank you for that. Mr Penguin. Welcome, Dave.
Good morning, my fellow councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to come along and speak to my submission. It's very brief. Background really is that I'm a cyclist and I use the road basically Howard through to Dunedin to commute as many times as I can during the working week. So with the opportunity to bring forward the improvements to the road between Glen Phallic and Vauxhall, I'd like to take the opportunity to support the bringing forward of the date of those measures. And I'm basing that basically on my sense of safety when I'm cycling on that route. And it mainly comes down to traffic density and the speed of flow of traffic. So I think it would be a good thing to have a continuity of the cycleway, basically from Macantra Bay where it begins all the way through to Vauxhall and continuing with the current cycleways that we've got here now. So I did take some samples of traffic just to back up my assertion that there were more cars to contend with at the time when I was cycling in the areas that we're talking about. So if I leave my home near Howard and proceed through to Cantree Bay, say leaving at seven o'clock in the morning, I might be passed by cars at a rate of about one every one minute and twenty seconds. If I'm between Glen Phallic or where the cycleway finishes and where the cycleway begins again in Vauxhall, I'm actually even passed by cars at a rate of every one every twenty seconds. So this full fold increase. Now that's normal, you'd expect that. But interestingly, if I take a sample, leaving five minutes later today, for example, I was passed by 40 cars in that stage two of the journey as compared to maybe 30 if I left at seven o'clock. So just five minutes difference. So I'm going to imagine, and I don't intend to fake by being excessively late to work by taking more samples, but you, you would imagine that there would be a lot of cars at that time. So I'm thinking for my safety, yes, this would be a good move for people in Cantree Bay who often I see taking their bicycles to Vauxhall and continuing into County Beach. It'd be good for them. There might, there might be a whole important of those who would actually start cycling. You have the opportunity to use that particular part of the road for the events that occur. Sometimes they require a lot of traffic management for those sort of triathons and things they have based out of Vauxhall or in Cantree Bay. So again, it would require a lot less traffic management to achieve all of that. I haven't mentioned the trip home because I generally would ride over type of road. But believe you me, at around about five o'clock to five thirty, the traffic density is, is high and the speeds are high. So people can get home in that region and they really don't have too much notice by and large of the fact that a cyclist is on the road. So there you go. I have the documents relating to the samples that the community board has sent, otherwise it's just a waste of a treat. So there you go. Any questions about that? And maybe that I'm living away, beyond all the value of supporting improvements to roads in the area. It's not exactly where I live, but you've heard my submission.
Thank you for that. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. You mentioned cars passing you as you cycle. And I don't want to preempt Councillor Wilson's questions, but I'm assuming that your commute up and down Portobello Road, or at least one way along Portobello Road, included the time when the road widening works were happening that already exist. And can you...
The samples that I took are only in areas where there are, are not really, where there are no cycleways.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to know if you could talk briefly about the impact that, when the, when the work was happening, that has happened already, the impact of those works on your safety, your perception of safety as you biked up and down a Portobello Road?
During the time that the works are appearing? Yeah. It's generally down to a 30 kilometre speed limit. And it wasn't an encumbrance really to be experiencing that. The only thing that you might find is that your tyres tend to be a bit more vulnerable for puncture if you've got various things grudged on the road. But it really is a minor. But I take it you're talking about actual roadworks being a problem for cyclists? And the amount of room that's going to be available for cyclists and motorists, especially the road?
And the increase in trucks that are around and those things?
Well, I suppose if you defer anything that's going to be a problem, I mean, down tracks.
Councillor Wilson.
The one suggestion I've had is that appreciating if we could get NZTA funding to be, to be over a shorter timeframe or a different model, would you as a rate power in that area be averse to a targeted rate that may speed up the whole development to this project so that we can possibly do more projects all at once?
I wouldn't mind personally, but I'm not sure how much support you'd get by and large from people who live in post Boxom and me. But certainly, yeah, cyclists.
Okay. But maybe Walkers on the other hand.
Yeah, I don't, I can't speak for Walkers.
And a little question of Councillor Hawkins. To my, having gone down here the other day... To my, having gone down here the other day, if it's safe, if we, as we... There's something like, I think, seven hectares of land has to be reclaimed and that's a lot of truck movements. And the question I had thought earlier today was if you built that going out, then at least it's safe, there's a large number of truck movements required. If you built it as you go out, at least you're making it safer for widening the road before the trucks have to get to that point. Does it make sense? Was it considered...
Yeah, okay, so the road is generally going to be safer sooner for traffic going out.
Well, if you're putting a lot of trucks on there, you're better to minimise the truck hazard by building it going out so that it's wider as you go out.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, but do you notice as it was being built, the other sections, a more difficulty with trucks? It may not be the case and it may not be a problem having trucks on the road.
Generally not, but the roadworks would not, there wouldn't be the presence of trucks when I'm cycling anyway. So the only thing that you would be left with would be the narrowing of the road for various stages as they were filling and so forth. So yeah, just a disruption to normal traffic flights. Trucks, all the problems you see.
Because you were there for them and after them.
Well, yeah, between, say, up to seven thirty in the morning, I don't think that was happening. But they do, they do, they do complete the job.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. The original decision on the staged upgrade was made back in, I think, 2005. So I'm just wondering, have you always lived at that current address prior to 2005? Or are you more of a recent...
No, I've been here since 1995, 96.
Okay, so you're there well before the discussions were had. So you were aware that riding a cycle in and out to work three or four times a week was going to be potentially a bit of a challenge.
It dropped from my weight, but...
I mean, the road's safe.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that always looked terribly unsafe. And to most people with this, still, yeah, they won't use it.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, David.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Okay, we'll resume, councillors. Mr. Barker from Larnet Castle, welcome.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Norcom Barker, director of Larnet Castle. And just a bit of background with the castle. We're a multi-award winning attraction. We've about 100,000 visitors a year. We have a functions centre, three types of accommodation and the main tourist attraction. We have 80 star and we're an iconic landmark through New Zealand. We support the heritage buildings option three. We think what the city's doing with heritage buildings is amazing. I think they can take real congratulations out of that. Also congratulate the funding towards the fossil control on the peninsula. I think that's a wonderful initiative and hopefully the fauna and the birdlife will benefit greatly from that in the future. Larnet Castle has real concerns about the future of tourism. We feel tourism is not valued by the Dunedin City Council, nor are the benefits understood. Part of this comes from the use of the BIL report that stated tourism's only 6% of the GDP. The same report stated that tourism is only 21% of Queenstown's economy. And I think anyone that knows Queenstown would see this as unrealistic. I spoke to Graham Budd, who's the CEO of Destination Queenstown, and he said he would categorically state it's between 50 to 55% of their economy. Tourism's an export business, it brings funds into our economy. It's not locally essentially government funded, unlike the district health board, education, including the police, etc., or the DCC. These funds can be cut off at any time. It's expandable and it has huge potential. Tourism 2025, which is a T Tourism Ministry Association and Tourism New Zealand Plan, and I'd be interested in how many councillors have actually heard of that. They want to expand the worth of tourism nationwide from 24 billion to 41 billion. So I think we definitely need to be a part of that. Worse, I think tourism inside the DCC is not appropriate. We think there's threat conflicts of interest, given the majority of stock in Dunedin is DCC involved. And it's interesting, these conflicts of interest is a reason that it was taken out in the first place for us with long memories. And Larnet Castle's been in the tourism trade close to 50 years now. We think the new entity will come and aggressively sell DCC products, especially when it comes to functions. If you put a lot of money into new entities such as the stadium, the Toy 2, they will be, could be put above us when it comes to trade shows such as meetings. And they're asked, where do you go? Do you go to Larnet Castle or do you go to one of the DCC owned entities? The use of images, currently tourism in Dunedin uses a castle a lot on their images. The DCC don't really use us at all. So going in-house, we have great concerns about that. We have concerns about the governance in-house. Next point is, I spoke to Kerry Gredigas, for those who know her, she was the Wellington mayor when they had the successfully, very successful positively Wellington. She's the current chair of Tourism New Zealand. She said it would be a very big mistake to take inside council. Who is the lead for tourism in our city now? There was 100% of the leader's job. And from our understanding, it's the person coming in will be a marketing person and tourism is now a very small part of their scope. So purely by logic, tourism has to suffer in Dunedin. As a business, who do we go to to speak about tourism in the city? Who is then the Dunedin representative of tourism at trade shows, conferences? And it's also a very dynamic industry. We know we need almost instant decisions and involvements with the trade shows, deals, and without a too offensive, I don't know, inside a bureaucratic organisation is the best place for that. We are also concerned about the lack of KPIs for the new entity. With the new entity, the advisory board, we haven't heard the setup of that. What are the powers of it? What is the KPIs of it? What is the governance of it? The next point we would like to speak to is the not charging of the DCC entities such as Toy 2, museum, art gallery. That is killing us as a business. We think it's anti-business. Example was if cruise ships come into town, they get off the ship, they go around free entities and they don't spend a cent in Dunedin, they get back on the ship. What is in that for us with Dunedin? Also in the trade, if something is free, the wholesalers won't package it. If they did, were able to package something, we could easily tip the fact that Dunedin is a one night stay, it could be a two night stay. The benefits for retailers, restaurants, hotels would be huge. The more you charge, the more wholesalers will want to actually sell you. And I've heard of reasons why you won't sell it, it's difficult to do. But I went to the library the other day and I'm a business person. I thought, you already have that database there in the library. You already have the technology for the library. If you can use the library card, maybe with a photo ID. I agree with the point, it should be free for people who paid for it, which is the Dunedin rate payers. But from people outside the city, they haven't contributed anything towards it. So why they get it for free? There's a lack of consistency Moana Pool is charged for, Olveston is charged for. Why isn't everything charged for? And it was interesting to see the first admission about Olveston and their budget for marketing is 21,000. At the castle, we spend that in about two weeks. Our marketing budget is hundreds of thousands. We have a full-time person, we have two part-time people. And the point being, we sell the city, because they can't visit Larnet Castle without visiting the city. And our direct competition is Olveston. And they spend less than 10% of our budget and council owned entities are on the business coattails. And we've charged and we think the city should actually do what is best, not what's easiest. Because Margaret Thatcher had quite a nice quote about socialism. She says, it's nice, but eventually you run out of other people's money. If I came to the DCC for, with a scenario that Larnet Castle's about spent $40 million if compared to this money and they might open for free, you'd essentially think I was mad, but that's the business plan of that. While it's like this, there'll be no outside investment. When was the last time anything like Real Journeys, THL and Otahu came to Dunedin? And why it's not a level playing field, they won't come to Dunedin. We need to get out of the dark ages or is the DCC so flush with money that we don't need to worry about this? The last point is, if you don't pay for something, you don't value it. The main points, we'd like to see tourism money ring fenced. We'd like that money spent for tourism, not for city marketing. And we'd like to see the skills, knowledge and experience of Dunedin tourism Dunedin kit. We've already lost a lot of experience and we'd like to see we limit that damage. We'd like to see the review for the in-house entity taking into account the industry and private business views. Because currently we don't feel valued and logistically it's quite difficult for Larnet Castle to be shifted to another city. I'm sure any other city would compromise with open arms. So any questions or comments, please?
Councillor Cowan.
Two things. The first is, you seem to be saying on the one hand that just about to be not current arrangement about having tourism Dunedin should not be changed. And on the other hand, the rest of what you've told us is all criticisms of what, how we've got to the point we are while we've had tourism Dunedin. Is that that you think that tourism Dunedin has been doing a good job or that it hasn't been doing a good job? And the second part of that question is, which are the most important KPIs that you'd like to see continue with the new arrangement?
I think tourism Dunedin were doing a good job from an industry point of view in very difficult times with the credit crunch, the gateway to the South Island being the precious airport. It was very difficult times and I think Olveston referred to that as a submission. And so they were doing a good job. The second point, the KPIs I'd like to see is the yield is raised from tourists, which flows on to if we don't charge tourists, we're not going to get a good yield from them. And also we can increase the length of stay, which again, if we charge, the wholesalers will sell us and the length of stay will increase.
Councillor Bezic.
Norcom, I support your comments about tourism Dunedin and I have some sympathy for the comment you made there. But you also say, we do have a feeling that the council does not value tourism or see the benefits it provides. Do you really believe that?
This came from a talk that Mayor Cowan, councillor Staines gave at Dunedin Host and it was that it's only 6% of the economy and we need to prove ourselves. Whereas I would have said to tourism, it's valued, how can we support you?
Councillor Thompson.
Your supposition is that the fact that you have competitors who are free is damaging your business. To what extent, if those competing free businesses were charging, would there be a financial choice being, having to be made by visitors to the city over where they spent their money as opposed to a time choice as to where they visit? I mean, I can clarify that. If you've only got one day and you can go to Toy 2 in the morning and the museum in the afternoon and it's free and then you're off, you might argue that's damaging your business. But if you've got more time, but you're having to pay for everything, then you're going to also self-select, aren't you, in terms of how much you can afford to spend? So to what extent, if people are having to spend money on other things that they currently don't have to, might that also impact upon your business?
It's an unknown, to be honest. Most cities do charge for everything and people still go to those cities. I mean, the cruise ships are always here for a limited time, so they will by default take the cheapest options. Especially the current cruise ships because they are low economic cruise ships. They're not the first ones that came in that were followed by rich Americans. These are followed by budget Australians.
Councillor Staines.
Norcom, you made the comment that we would be losing skill set. Are you aware that the new structure has staffing that are specifically there for tourism?
All I know is the leader of tourism's Dunedin, I understand, is he not Staines? Or is he...
I'm not sure at this stage what final decision's been made, but I know that there was no direct intention to lose skill sets in the change and that there is a specific tourism sector planned. So there will be tourism, tourism...
Education, business.
And business.
We had Dr. Bidrow speak to Dunedin Host last week and she was saying that the tourism will report to one person who is a marketing person. Is that, that was our understanding?
I don't think that structure's been finalized yet that we've worked through with the new director of the enterprise Dunedin. The focus on tourism, councillor Staines, tourism, education, business in the city. So there hasn't been a decision that we're aware of about the structure.
Because our concern is, we do a lot of interaction with tourism Dunedin. We still talk to them every couple of weeks. We see a lot of them. If someone comes in and they are in charge of city marketing, tourism's a very small part of it. Who do we talk to within the DCC?
Just one correction. I did not say it's only 6% GDP and therefore you needed to prove yourselves. What I was trying to point out at that time was that we put some 1.82 million dollars into tourism for 6% GDP and we put about 400,000 now into all of the other industry that generates the 94% of our GDP. So it's just that question around, are we getting the best bang for our bucks across the whole spectrum?
I understand that, but that's statistics and 6%, you know, if it's only 21% of Queenstown economy, I...
Well, can I challenge you on that? If you don't believe the 6%, what evidence? The question is, where's the evidence that it's more than that? Have you got that or have you just got anecdote?
Would you believe that Queenstown's only 21%?
I don't know. I'm not an expert in analysis. I'm asking you, if you've brought substantiated analysis to show what percentage, I'm not talking about for you, so I'm talking about here. We can only go on the analysis we've done and if it's more than 6%, I'd be delighted to know.
I'm believing that the BIL report is what we're going off and its statistics, it's what the methodology behind it is. And that methodology stays 6% for Dunedin and 21% for Queenstown. So I'm using that as a direct comparison. I'm saying, I'm sure that Queenstown economy, if you pulled tourism out, it wouldn't shrink by 21% and it would collapse overnight.
Well, I don't know. What I'm asking you is, have you had any analysis done to show that tourism is a bigger proportion of the Dunedin economy than 6%?
No.
Thank you.
Councillor McTash.
Thank you. Norcom, I'm just interested in the comment that you made around most other cities charging. We recently had a report on that very issue because we were considering charging visitors as per your recommendation or as per your suggestion. The feedback that we had through that report was that most other cities around you, there is no precedent really for charging for access to art galleries and museums, that most other places don't have a charge on those. So I'm just curious as to where that comment came from.
We, my mother and I, went on a trip through England and we were in all the attractions in England and the majority do charge over there. So I'm looking at it from an international point of view rather than a...
Councillor Hawkes.
Is it your contention that all non-residential, all people in Dunedin at any given time who aren't residents are there for tourists and should as such be charged to use the services here rather than a broader spectrum of reasons why people would come to be in Dunedin for business, visiting family, funerals, those sorts of things?
It's got to be workable. So I would say anyone that isn't a resident would have to pay because otherwise it's just too difficult. And if someone hasn't paid for it, they shouldn't get it for free.
But you do accept that not all people in Dunedin who aren't residents at any given time aren't tourists?
Yeah, there's no perfect solution. I do accept that.
Any further questions? Thank you, Norcom. Thanks for your submission. Mr. Anderson. Has he been here? Ms. Tucker. Keep Dunedin Beautiful. Welcome, Jan.
Soon as I go out of the room, it might feel more often.
All right, you're representing Keep Dunedin Beautiful.
Keep Dunedin Beautiful. I'm sure most of you here do know of the good work that we do around the city to keep our New Zealand beautiful, to keep New Zealand beautiful and to keep Dunedin beautiful. We would like to thank you for the past support of the two projects below, the Hanging Baskets and the Murals. Hanging Basket's probably the best ever this year, but we will be looking for a new partnership if the funding is available. And we could look at relocation of some of the baskets. However, there is a problem with that because about 15 years ago, we raised, the KTP raised a lot of money to put in the permanent watering system. And if you haven't got that, those baskets don't do very well. So it's something that we will look at, but we are hoping that we will continue to receive funding for that. Graffiti. Graffiti, this is an increasing problem around not only Dunedin but in the suburbs, out in suburbs as well. We're pleased that the city council has, like Rebecca Williams, Adrian Blair, met with two Bidros to discuss the problem. And we really believe that graffiti on council property should be removed within 24 hours. This sets an example for the private property owners as well. I don't know whether city councillors are aware that the Ministry of Justice has quite a large amount of funding for graffiti. Several councils around New Zealand have applied to it. One council's got $47,000, we're setting up a project in education, others are as low as $5,000 or whatever. But we believe if we want to be serious about keeping our town, city free from graffiti, we need to get a policy and we would be happy to be the lead agency. We probably had more experience at graffiti than anyone else around here, but we would also need to, to implement that. We'd need an adequate budget and hours to carry them out efficiently. Now, Darlene, our coordinator, receives most of the graffiti phone calls that come through and she spends an inordinate amount of time on this. I don't think we realize how much time. City street cleaning, this is something else that we get a lot of calls about, that we believe there is a need for more street cleaners. We have a wonderful street cleaner that does the CBD and he works, he does tremendous work, but it's an increase in litter and it's an increase in broken glass and it's a continual danger. Now, we do our bit, we have volunteers that adopt a spot, they're volunteers completely, we give them bags and gloves and they look after a certain spot they've adopted. And we recognized a lot of those at our awards. So yeah, we are doing our bit for that. We also run a theatre group, a professional theatre group every year. So far this year, we have funding to the tune of 17,000 towards it, which means it is available to schools free. Last year we went to, I think, around 50 schools. So we are doing an out bit with education on this and we're not even asking for money for the council to do it, which is nice. But we do, what we do think is that we need two or more street cleaners and some of them to get out to the suburbs, to Green Island, to South Dunedin, Port, places like that, Mozgill, where there is a problem and it could be addressed to make the place more beautiful. One of our other concerns, and we get quite a lot of phone calls about this and I've actually seen it, we have the Motomoa people that ride on their little moas and do the reserves and the areas on the street. What they do half the time is just drive over the litter. So where you've got one bit of paper, you now have got bits and sometimes the same with the bottles. And we have had people ring up and say, oh, well, look, they stopped and picked up the bottle and then threw it back where they were mowed. I believe there needs to be more accountability. I don't think it's ever checked. People don't, I mean, it's only we get the complaints, so we do know that, just something to note. I know this, it really annoys a lot of people and I think it annoys Mayor Cal. The orange road cones and traffic signs around the city, especially in the octagon. And we know there's got to be safety there, but on cruise ship days, it's just one maze of orange cones. Is it possible to move the cruise ship buses? Perhaps. Look along Cumberland Street outside Countdown, there's a big huge bus stop there and a few parks, you get them off the main street, you get them out of the octagon. But in general, I think we're overpopulated with orange cones and road signs, not only in cruise ship seasons, but, you know, all round. And that's me.
Thank you. councillor Wilson.
Jan, thank you for your thoughts towards the city cleaning. One of the issues there, and I'm just wondering, you, you may have seen the reply which said that the certain parts are done daily, some parts are done weekly, two weekly and every eight weeks. Now, one of the perception problems, I think, is that we probably don't tell people that the streets are being cleaned and when and therefore either they're not prepared and haven't moved their cars out of the way.
So you're talking, sorry, you're talking about the street sweepers. We're talking a lot more about the pavements and areas like that. And I might say the street sweeper was in Port Chama three weeks ago. He swept the little leaves into little piles, went away and it rained, so all the little piles then got immediately spread back to where they'd come from. We have a street cleaner that goes to Port with a blower and blows the rubbish up the road. Half of it disappears off that way and half disappears that way and a little bit comes here. It's with a blower. It's useless.
Thank you.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. And thanks to Keep Dunedin Beautiful for providing one of the few opportunities for paid acting work in Dunedin over all these years. I know many people personally are grateful for that. I've got a couple of questions with regards to your submission. The issues that you referred to with the Malkam Trust, and I don't necessarily need to know what they are specifically if you don't come and talk about them, but are you confident that those issues won't transfer to future partners in that way?
We would be looking to make sure that we were covered. We dealt with Blue Skin Nurseries and with, through Mark Brown, who did a one, and his apprentice did a wonderful job, but it just did not work with Malkam Trust. They ended up with Blue Skin doing most of the work. So we would be looking at other partners for that, using, still using Blue Skin Nurseries probably.
And around murals, I'm sure you're aware, there are a growing number of world-class street art projects going on around Dunedin at the moment. I wonder if that is something that Keep Dunedin Beautiful would be interested in supporting, given that anecdotally at least, the provision of art in public places in that form is a vast deterrent to tagging, which is what I'm assuming you're referring to when you talk about graffiti.
We all, well, we do, I mean, the typical example was Baldwin Street, which we have done. We've done a huge number of murals. I don't know if you're really aware of the number we have done over the years. George Street Underpass is another one we did this year. We just do, like, we've just done so many. And we also do the bus shelters. We get very good comments on the bus shelters. One at Berkes has just been finished, it's looking great, we're nearly finished. So no, we do the murals where areas are pointed out to us that's tagging and Baldwin Street was one.
So you haven't had issues, so that where you have murals, there haven't been issues subsequently with?
No, well, also we cover them with anti-graffiti paint.
Right. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Jan. Much appreciated. You're representing the Ataga Settlers Association.
A brief copy of what I'm going to say. And with these notes, almost all positive. That makes it a lot easier for me and hopefully for you too. So as we all know, the city's new museum continues to receive accolades and awards and it's a comfortable and energetic space in which to spend quality time. The Ataga Settlers Association is very proud to be associated with Toito Ataga Settlers Museum and to have made meaningful contributions to the fundraising. I've previously submitted in support of the aspirational target of 180 visitors to the museum a year. Little do we think that that number will be exceeded within the first six months of the museum opening, without any indication of it tapering off to any micro degree. Museums now establish itself as a destination for social history, community events, local gatherings or just a good cup of coffee. Nevertheless, the job's not finished. It's essential the museum is, continues to be well managed with good resources so the citizens of Dunedin and our visitors continue to regard it as the place to go. Operational funding must reflect world-class museum, the world-class museum that's been established. Of course, the museum staff now have an additional challenge with the Chinese garden being added to their responsibilities. Association fully supports this reorganization as there's potential for real synergy and improved visitor experience in the historic precinct of the city. Association continues to be very impressed with the museum staff. They are an energetic group who continue, are continually looking for ways to maintain the museum operating at current world best practice. There is a true visitor focus balanced with an imperative to treasure the collection for future generations. It was welcome news that the dedicated position of museum director will be advertised soon. It is a big job and best value will accrue if that person can focus on the museum and the Chinese garden with authority to manage and enhance the museum, maintaining the high standard. It's pleasing to see that the director of the Ataga Museum is continuing a regular dialogue with Toito Ataga Settlers Museum with a view to collaboration rather than competition. Both museums are very strong in their collections and many areas of interest. There is so much scope, it should never be necessary for exhibitions and programs to overlap. There are opportunities however, for complementary exhibitions and programs coordinated to give visitors a wider appreciation of the subject. This approach will enhance the concept of Dunedin having a museum cluster and as a destination for history and heritage. There are a couple of points that I'd like to submit on further. And one is, is the importance of the annual acquisitions budget, being able to respond quickly to opportunities to purchase important collection items. I know that the, the part of the budget in which that was changed, but the museum staff are identifying gaps in the collection and will need to call upon that budget from time to time and they need to be able to act quickly in some cases if particular items coming up for auction. Signaling here that future funding may be requested to strengthen the promotion of the museum cluster in order to increase visitor numbers to Dunedin. And future funding may be requested to provide further professional advice and support for the smaller museums in the cluster. I know that already happens, that need may increase in the future. So thank you again for receiving our submission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
councillor Cowan.
We've, we've heard this morning from Larnex Castle that they consider Dunedin City to be a bit of an unfair competitor to them, especially because it chooses not to charge for its activities compared with other ones. Would you, have you a comment to make about whether any of the, in particular, Toito could move to a charging model or in another sense, another way of achieving some of what Larnex Castle might want would be to, if we're heading down the potential for museum cluster activities? Could heritage and things be a cluster that isn't just council with its unfair position, for want of a better description? Could it include other private historic and, and collected items?
Chair, that's quite a wide question, of course. I think everyone will remember that it used, there used to be charges to enter the Ataga Settlers Museum and that was one of the benefits that the Ataga Settlers Association can offer its members. The council decided that it no longer wished the charge to be more in line with the Ataga Museum and the Art Gallery. And, and have to say, we did support that because we thought it was fair that there was a large portion of public good in making the collection available to, to the wider public. And in terms of the museum being a place for people just to cruise and visit for half an hour and come back again next week for another half hour, it seems to me that the museum not charging is entirely appropriate. Taking that further, I, I'm not sure that we can group all of the heritage and historic facilities in the city into the same category. And certainly Larnex Castle has some special, especially in certain ways, and of course it is quite remote, so people are making a decision to go there to visit the castle, whereas people might just pop in to Toito Ataga Settlers Museum for, as I said before, for a short time. So I think it is quite different and I'm very comfortable with leaving that decision with the council following wider consultation and consideration.
Further questions? councillor Hawkins.
Just two things. Your submission refers to, this is on page, page 102, group of activities, it's 97 and now script. Furthermore, increased use of volunteers will enhance the community involvement and connection. And Dunedin relies very heavily on volunteer labour in a lot of instances, which is fantastic, but I do sometimes worry about being overly reliant on a volunteer workforce and I just want to seek reassurance that the work that those volunteers will be doing, that isn't work that should in fact be paid work.
Thank you, Mr Chair. That's, that's a very good point and we are very aware that we wouldn't want volunteers to replace paid jobs. There is more of an emphasis on members of the association simply assisting with events rather than being volunteers and replacing what might otherwise be a full or part-time job. We have a lot of members who are very keen to get more involved with the museum, behind the scenes and with visitors and we would like to encourage that and we're working with the, the acting director to, to allow that to happen. But, Mr Chair, I'd like to reassure you that we, we wouldn't want to be taking away potential for these jobs in a tight economic environment. Obviously, funding is short and if we can support the museum in a, with people power, then we would, we would be happy to do that on a temporary and, and on the basis of assisting the existing staff rather than providing temporary employees.
And secondly, the Ataga Museum have submitted to us that the proposed increase in Toito and Dunedin Public Art Gallery funding, parts of which at least should be reallocated instead to fund the Ataga Museum, in the spirit of camaraderie, I'm sure. I, I wonder whether the Ataga Settlers Association has a particular view on that suggestion?
Again, I think I must defer to, to the council to, to make that call. The budget for the museum is pretty tight, it, it can't afford all the staff it would ideally like, and I know that's always the case. I would, I would be surprised if there was significant further savings in the operation of Toito Ataga Settlers Museum, which could be reallocated to, to the Ataga Museum. But I don't have the detail to even start to suggest where any savings might start.
Thank you for your diplomacy.
councillor Bez.
In regard to your statement pertaining to the museum cluster and looking at further possible further funds to develop it, do you see the Sports Hall of Fame and museum in that cluster?
I would think so, certainly. I certainly see the art gallery, the collection at the public library, obviously the Hocken National Archives all being part of that. So I would think the Sports Hall of Fame would be an important part.
Any further questions? Thank you, Phil. I appreciate your submission and its very positive nature. Welcome, Bill. So the next 10 minutes is yours.
Great. I'll get on with it. I'm getting my, my submission with a few extra documents sent round, should be enough for one each. Good morning. I'm Bill Chisholm, general manager of Football South. Football South is one of the seven federations of New Zealand football, so I represent some 9,000 members in our federation, approximately half of those in Dunedin. There are two, one or two ideas I would like to share with you this morning. Firstly, it's our vision for a home of football. I've been here before talking about it and we'll keep on about it. It's incorporating an artificial turf as part of the Logan Park redevelopment plan that was shelved a few years ago with the building of the stadium. The possibility of accessing FIFA funding for this has certainly been enhanced by the city hosting the under-20 World Cup finals next year. We hope that the home of football will be part of the legacy from that tournament. The home of football concept is part of a strategic plan to grow the game and provide pathways for people of all ages and abilities. to grow the game and provide pathways for people of all ages and abilities. To that end, we want to build partnerships at a local level with the council, sport at Aga, schools and clubs, tertiary education providers, and the business community. Football is part of the sport and recreation sector, which contributes significantly to both the economic and social development. As such, we'd like to see more recognition of this in economic development planning. It is encouraging to read about the forming of the new enterprise Dunedin Agency, incorporating the Economic Development Unit, eyesight, and tourism Dunedin. Hopefully, this inspires a more integrated approach to economic development. I'm also encouraged by the developing sister-city relationship with Shanghai, and the opportunities that should bring to both football and sport in general. I also want to share with you a vision for the stadium, and how we should view sport in general. Ultimately, the stadium should be used 365 days a year, for all kinds of activities, not just sport. It should be seen as social capital, an investment for the future, for people to use and enjoy. With this in mind, we like, we like the Community Use Fund that's already established for the stadium, and we've certainly made use of it ourselves in over the last year or so. We also like the refreshing and inclusive approach of the new CEO, Terry Davis, and we look forward to working with him in the future. So, as a city, we should be trying to answer the following questions. What is the real value to the community of the stadium? What is the real value to the community of Logan Park and the redevelopment plan? What is the real value to the community of our home of football? And the overall sort of arch in question, the real value of sport and recreation. So, I haven't really come here asking for a specific amount of money, but rather to change your mindset, how you view football, sport, and the stadium. You'll see some extra supporting documents that I've included that might help you along with your thinking. And I've maybe just finished with a quote from a Walter Fust, who was director-general of the Swiss Agency for Development and Cooperation. "Sport is not a luxury in our society. On the contrary, sport is an important investment in the present and the future." Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other questions? Councillor Wilson.
I'm not sure if you've seen the response from staff, who, have you seen that? They suggest one that you need to do the feasibility study. But the question I've actually got is for staff, if anyone can answer it, is whether, they've also suggested that measures, that to measure the economic impact of sports provisions is something they'd like to do when there are competitions in town. I'm wondering whether that is resourced now, why we're not doing it now, or whether we need to have more resources in order to do it.
Well, it's a valid question, but I don't, it's not one that we need to answer right at the moment.
But before next week, if we could get that information, yeah.
Okay. Councillor Adams.
Thank you very much for a variety of interesting comments, and particularly for a stadium vision that gets used constantly, 365 days a year, I think you suggested.
Yeah, maybe a couple of days off for public holidays, probably.
Do, do you realise that the turf that's in there, despite the reinforcement that it's got, especially in the winter, takes a good two weeks to recover from just one game?
Yeah.
To get it to be used for 365 days a year, then, do you recognise that an artificial turf is needed, or do you have some other ideas for being able to keep the existing turf set up and still get the kind of use that you're hoping for?
Yeah, I think it's, you've got to get away from thinking it's just a turf anyway. So, there's plenty of space there for, like, at the Oriti end of the, Oriti stand end of the stadium, there's quite a big flat surface there that can be used every day. It's a concrete pad. So, that can be used by all sorts of, I think that's where the, one of the local markets is staged every Sunday. And obviously, there's plenty of space up on the stands that should be used, being used for community groups and commercially as well. So, it's not just the turf. There are limitations with the turf, and I guess maybe at some future date, maybe it will be artificial turf. I guess the, whether international rugby can be played on there at the moment, but maybe in the future, that would be possible.
Any further questions? Councillor Walsh.
Bill, thanks for coming today. Is there any timeline on the FIFA funding for the artificial turf?
Not officially, but the longer you leave it, of course, someone else jumps you in the queue. And there's already been, I think we're really the only major centre in Dunedin, in New Zealand that hasn't had FIFA assistance with funding until now. But, you know, Auckland could jump ahead of us, and they might want another one. So, I think it's a real, a good opportunity with the World Cup, this under-20 World Cup next year. We've already talked to the local organising committee about legacies, and that's our priority. You know, if we could access that funding, it puts us, you know, on the road to getting that home of football.
And just a quick follow-up question. When you look at Saturday Club Saga last year, how many weeks did you lose because of the fields?
Last year was quite a good year, I think. So, probably only two or three. You know, it was a good year. It's pretty wet at the moment, so we'll see what happens this year.
Councillor Thompson.
The, I'm interested in what your perception is of the barriers to getting what you want on Logan Park. If, if the money's coming from FIFA, and if it's possible to set that aside and say, well, that's not a barrier, what is it that you see that is getting in the way of this proceeding, that council could make a difference about, that might not have a cost implication, for council anyway?
I mean, as I understand it, the council has, has set aside some land there for, for the artificial turf to be initiated. So, I mean, that's, it really finances the, it all comes down to the finance. So, even with the FIFA money, we would still have to do a whole lot of fundraising, but at least we're sort of getting on for about halfway there. At the moment, the total cost of something like that's probably 1.5 million. But I get, and also, it's, you know, that other point I'm trying to make, I guess, is looking at the sport and sports facilities. I don't want to steal John Brimble's thunder, it's from Sport at Aga, but I'm sure he'll be talking about facilities plan, and the impact that has on our community for the future. And so, I think we need to be looking at these, this idea of social capital, and the, it's sort of getting away from the old profit and loss idea. So, the main hurdle is the finance. The councils, as far as I understand it, are talks with Parks and Recreation, Hamish Black, McReese, and so on. I think they're, I think they're generally behind it. So, that's good.
My recollection, though, is that one of the potential issues was that if FIFA were putting the money in, it would need to be for the sole use of football.
I think we need to be in control of it, yeah. But it's not to say it's solely used by football, but I think it's, with FIFA putting that money in, it does need to be a football-specific turf, rather than, say, a hockey turf, which is different. Yeah.
Councillor McTavish.
Two questions. Bill, thanks for coming in. Firstly, the staff referred to the need for a feasibility study by Football South for a proposed home of football at Logan Park. Is that something that you guys are currently underway on, or is it, is that the first time that you have heard about the need for a feasibility study?
I don't think it's the first time we've had a need for it. If you go back to 2012, I think we produced a report for the council that answered quite a few of the usage-type questions. So, no, it's not new, but, you know, and there's plenty of evidence around the country from the different other councils that can support the benefits of an artificial turf, and the 24/7 type usage that that can provide. Yeah. So, it's not a problem, no.
Yeah, okay. And then, just in terms of follow-on from Councillor Thompson's question, when you say football would need to be in control of the turf, is that, you mean, is that, and then you gave the example of the type of turf, that's totally understandable. But does that need to be in control of the turf, extend to management of the turf on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah, I think so.
Right.
Yeah.
Would football then be paying rent effectively for that piece of ground, which would otherwise be used by council for?
That's a good question. I don't know. I guess it's something for you guys to work out, and that's the idea behind, you know, budgets and all the rest of it. But, yeah, I mean, it's, if you're going to charge us a certain amount as the stadium, probably it'd be a bit of a hurdle.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councillor Stone.
Can you just remind us of what level of funding FIFA might be prepared to put into an artificial turf?
500,000 US. The odd of a total of about one and a half million.
Yep.
Yep.
So, at the moment, does Football South have any funding of its own to add to that, or is?
Well, we, it would be the focus of a major fundraising, that would have to be it. We don't have, you know, we don't have that money to put on ourselves at the moment, no.
So, in terms of what we've done with hockey in the past, which is to provide a loan?
Yep.
On which we have a low interest rate, but that has to be repaid, is that something that Football South may be interested in looking at, and is it worth perhaps considering and giving us some information on whether that's a possibility, and to what extent it might be a possibility, because there is a liability involved in that?
Yeah. No, I think that's the sort of thing we should be looking at. Our sort of equivalents, and I know that equivalents in Wellington have just been doing that, basically. And so, they have a substantial capital, football have a substantial loan to the, I think it's with the Wellington City Council. So, that sort of model is, there are different models around the country, but that's certainly one that you, we'd want to consider, yeah.
It would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
To understand from Football South, just how they would see that, and what, to what extent they could commit.
Yep.
Because that would then help us understand what financial exposure we have.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's certainly be subject for ongoing discussions, I hope.
Councillor Hawke.
The kind of artificial turf that you're proposing, this floodlit artificial turf for the home of football, and it's an interesting comparison, I think, to the, to the hockey turfs, what is the lifespan of it? Because there's need, my understanding, need to be replaced every 10 years or something?
It's probably about right, depending on the usage, I guess, but I guess somewhere between 10 and 15 years, you would be looking to replace it, yeah.
Is your understanding that the FIFA money would be a one-off for its initial construction, and any further replacements, that burden would fall on our community?
Well, I think we can be running it on a sort of, at least a semi-commercial basis, that we'd be, we would be sort of hiring it out to, for uses by, you know, schools and clubs, and some competitions as well. So, I think that's part of the model we set up, is to try and have a revenue stream, so that you're, you know, after 10 years, you've got enough to set aside for, sort of, not only for ongoing maintenance, but for replacement.
Schools and clubs tend not to have a whole lot of spare cash either.
No.
It's inevitable that there will be some element, I'm assuming, of user pays charges to use it once it is constructed.
Yeah, that's from, that's what I meant before when I was talking about.
Yeah. So, will that not create barriers to access that don't necessarily currently exist, given the infrastructure that is used present?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we do have in football quite a few user pay programmes that are basically, uh...
But not for turf?
Not the turf, no. But, so, we're not unused to paying a charge for some products or services. So, I guess the, again, if you go around the country, that's, that's a pretty common model for helping to gain revenue to look to the future and for replacement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you. Cheers.